Okay, good evening, everyone. Welcome. We are reconvening our open session and I'd like to ask trustee Lang to report out actions taken in closed session.
Yes, there were two actions that were taken in closed session as follows. On a seven to zero vote, the board approved a position resignation and reassignment agreement and general relief of an academic administrator. And on a seven to zero vote, the board approved a reduction in work hours to eight hours per week for the period of July 1st through August 18th, 2017, for a classified employee at Saddleback College. Those were the actions taken in closed session.
Thank you trustee Lang. Now I have the invocation led by trustee Jay, followed by the pledge of allegiance led by me.
Our heavenly Father, we bow our heads in gratefulness for the beautiful facilities and campuses that we have. We thank thee so much for the community support and efforts to provide quality education and workforce development. We are so grateful for our wonderful students who attend our colleges. Please bless them and bless them with continued success. We are so grateful for our wonderful staff, faculty, administrators, who care and give so much. We are again so grateful for the many hours and hours of the faculty, staff, and administrators who work so hard and diligently on our very successful accreditation. We appreciate the hard work. We ask that you be with this board tonight to help us make proper righteous decisions for the future of the college and the students and staff. We ask that you be with this nation at this time, so we can come together as one and work together for the freedom, fairness, and justice for all. Amen.
Please join with me in reciting the pledge to our great nation. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united ground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, we have a happy occasion. We're going to swear in a new student trustee. Should I? And I think, come with me, this way. Okay. Well, we have Robert to swear in a new student trustee in the college district. So Jordan, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Jordan Larson, solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
That I will defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies, full and ultimate.
Good. You jumped ahead of me. That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
And Constitution of the State of California.
And Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to.
Very good.
Congratulations. Good evening, everyone, the board and administration. I want to just thank you for accepting me into the student trustee position. During this transition time, I was welcomed with open arms with a very professional staff. This has actually been my eighth year of being a Saddleback student and I consider myself an expert in the field of student success and student life. And I ask respectfully to the board to utilize my skills and expertise in creating the most beneficial results for the students. Thank you.
Okay, so now we, I'm seeing we have some requests for public comments and I'd like to remind folks or inform folks that we do allow for two minutes of public comments. I appreciate you staying within that timeframe. And first up, I would ask Doug Barr to come forward to the podium.
I'm going to talk fast to stay within my two minutes. President Jamal, members of the board, colleagues and friends, I'm here tonight to remind some of you, inform others of a work in progress. The initial goal is the identification of a comprehensive accurate list of those individuals who have been granted or should have been Saddleback College emeritus status as either a retired faculty member, a retired administrator, or both. The ultimate goal and timing is to have a fully accurate endorsed list acknowledged and displayed sometime during the 50th anniversary celebration of the college. Formerly or commonly, this listing has been in the back of the college catalog, not every year, but most years. However, you need to be aware, there've been a few discrepancies, inconsistencies, and protocols that I believe need to be addressed through this effort. First, in the past, some individual names were removed once they died. That alone is what personally drew my attention to this project, as one of my closest friends remained on the list for one year until his death and then he was gone from the list. Second, emeritus status has not been granted posthumously to those who've served sufficient years at the college but died while they were in service. I think that's unfortunate and needs to be corrected. As a side note, the comedian cynic in me thinks someone involved with emeritus thinks death and emeritus don't somehow fit together. The third discrepancy is what appears to be multiple inconsistencies, particularly regarding those individuals who have retired from a combination of faculty and administrative roles, or even those who served exclusively as administrators. This project is tied in heart to the Jack Swartzball History of Saddleback College project. As most of you are aware, Jack served as a founding college administrator and subsequently as an honored member of the counseling faculty. He loved his place and I'm sure he's cheering from above for this to come to fruition. Various college constituency groups were made of this idea and supported this project after Jack's death. But be aware that there's a continuous effort and I think you will be seeing some ending product of this that you may have to wave your magic wand over eventually. And I gave samples of former listings to Joyce, I think those will show up in your packets, that's just showing you some of what we've had in the past. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you. Now I'd like to ask Dean Lippold to come to the podium.
I'm not going to say this will be the last time you hear from me because it probably won't be, but I just wanted to come tonight and express my gratitude to the board and the district and the college for the support I've had during my 17-plus years at Saddleback College. Just a wonderful place to work. I could not pick a better job than to be at Saddleback College. The people and the students here are just amazing. Our replacement is actually here, worked with me this week, he's going to be introduced here in a little bit, but the biggest thing for me is to see the projects that have finally come to fruition in the athletic venues, the stadium, which is just going to, the transition the stadium is going to bring to this campus is going to be amazing. You will see that when it happens. But also the gym is getting redone and the baseball field as well. And those are our classrooms, it's really important. So I just want you to know that I appreciate everything you've done. You know, you guys are great people. It's been a pleasure working at Saddleback College. And all of my colleagues are just super classy people and I just can't tell you how much I love working here and what a great ride it's been. And to finish at Saddleback College has truly been a dream come true. So I thank you for everything you've done. So thank you.
Well, Tony, I think on behalf of the board of trustees, I think I can safely say that we are very appreciative of what you've done here at Saddleback College. My only regret is I wish I got to know you earlier. I've only been on the board four and a half years and I really enjoyed the retirement party where it was turning out to a partial roast. I didn't, I mean, I actually had no idea that you were a tenacious coach in your prior years and really took no prisoners. The war stories of Tony's coaching days are really legendary, but I think the turnout at your event was really indicative. And I know Todd was there, Todd Burnett, and our comedian on the board, Marsha Milchuker, was there. But it was clear you're revered and well-liked by so many people and you just did a hell of a job here, Tony. So congratulations. You earned it. Did you want to say anything?
Yeah.
Oh, yes, sir.
Is that right? Yeah, thanks so much, Tony. I really done a wonderful job as dean of kinesiology and athletics all these years and you gave me an opportunity to use my skill as a stand-up comedian at your roast, which I really enjoyed. So thank you so much for that, too. It was a lot of fun and we really enjoyed it. Thank you. And thanks for coming back. And don't be a stranger, okay? Thanks.
Student trustee Larson.
Yeah, I played water polo for Saddleback and one thing I do remember was Dean Lippold. He would always go the extra mile, you know, when I'd see him on and off the pool deck, wouldn't be scared to stop and, you know, ask how things are going. And I think that's one thing that separated him from others is going that extra mile. So you will be missed and congrats on your retirement.
You're here. All right, moving on to board reports, I will ask trustee Prendergast to kick things off.
I really don't have too much to report except for it was nice to be at commencement for both Saddleback and IVC. Really enjoy seeing my former students come across the stage and be able to congratulate them personally. And then on behalf of the district I represented at Beckman High School's graduation, once again congratulating early college graduates through that ceremony as well. So nice job. Both colleges for those events are very well received.
Thank you. Trustee Jay.
I attended five events in May since the last board meeting and busy, 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 and exhausted. The month of June, I attended last Friday, the South Orange County Economic Coalition luncheon at the Mission VAO Country Club. Supervisor Lisa Bartlett was the guest speaker and it was a question and answer format. The topics discussed were interesting. It was the revitalization of Dana Harbor, trolleys from the outlining districts get to the beach cities, Avenida La Plata road extension, the homeless problem in Orange County, the animal care services, and the John Wayne Airport. But the best thing of all is great news, best news ever. IVC Foundation raised a million dollars in the year 2016, I mean, 2016 to 17 fiscal year. IVC can offer the students more scholarships, program support, and more opportunities. Special thanks to IVC Foundation Board of Governors. Go to President Bill Hewitt and then Elsa Oransky.
Thank you. Thank you trustee Jay. All right, for me, I did attend and was able to speak at both scholarship ceremonies and both commencements. The numbers speak for themselves. The money that has been coming into both foundations for supporting student scholarships continues to grow and kudos to both boards and the staffs of the IVC Foundation. Don Rickner here at Saddleback and then Alyssa Oransky and then Anthony Ferry is the board chair at Saddleback College Foundation and Bill Hewitt, outgoing chair, I believe, at IVC Foundation. The commencements were excellent, I thought. Again, the numbers speak for themselves on degrees and the transfer rates are both in excellent positions. I did attend, I went to Washington DC with my colleague Terry Witt and attended the ACCT National Conference in DC. Suffice to say, I think that, I think we're good sessions. I think we did contribute a lot and I think our board in terms of our practices is in a good place. We can always learn more. I was encouraged by the number of young trustees around the country. California tends to be a little older than other states. We met a number of trustees from the state of Oregon who were much younger than we were and that's good to see, very good to see. And a lot of energy around the country for community colleges and it's nice to see the youth getting on the boards. Two other things, we had our board self-evaluation yesterday or on Saturday. And we covered a lot of territory. Nowhere near can cover that in the next 20 seconds, but we're looking at ways to continue to do things better and I think we're self-critical. We need to be, we're not perfect, but I think we're making a lot of good progress. We don't always agree among the board and don't always agree all the time with the interim chancellor, but most of the time. So I think that's a good place to be. And before I turn it over to my left, I'd just like to welcome back trustee Wright. It's good to see him in that seat here. He had, you know, a little difficulty for a period of time, but he seems to be back in really good shape. So trustee Wright.
Thank you very much trustee Jamal. Unfortunately, I was not able to attend a lot of events. I did attend three events before I ended up in the hospital. I attended the listing session or what we call coffee with trustees and chancellors. That was the day after the last board meeting and so we met with people up from IVC and also from Saddleback College. And it's very, it's very fun to be there and listen to the comments that are made. I also attended the Saddleback College Annual Employee Award Ceremony on Wednesday, May 17th, and then the following that, the Saddleback College Vets Annual End of the Year Celebration. Both excellent events. And then on the 23rd of May, I ended up in the hospital for 12 days. So I just want to thank all the letters and prayers and everything else that have been made on my behalf. So thank you so much for all of your thinking of me and remembering me. And the other thing I just wanted to end with, I want to congratulate both Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College for their letters. Both of them have received letters from the Accreditation Commission for Community and Junior Colleges reaffirming accreditation for seven years.
Thank you trustee Wright. Trustee Lang.
Yes, thank you. You've already heard from my colleagues about the commencement ceremonies, which are certainly always a highlight of the year. That was terrific. I also want to welcome back trustee Wright and continue to pray for his continued good health. Welcome aboard our new student trustee. Good to have you back in the seat representing the students. I do want to give a shout-out not only to Tony Lippold, but all of the faculty and staff that have accepted the early retirement incentive for all the years of dedication that all of you have provided to our district that's made it such a great district. Obviously, there'll be a lot of new faces. Number of retirees that we have that have accepted this will very much change the culture of the institution, but obviously we'll have a lot of new blood as well. So that's probably a healthy thing as well. Other than that, just to, you know, wish everybody a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Milchuker.
Okay. First, I wanted to thank everyone for all the hard work that they did for the accreditation. As you have heard, the accreditation for both colleges has been reaffirmed and this is really an important thing and I think we've gotten a better accreditation report this time than I can remember and I have a long memory. So we've done, it's really excellent. So it's an accomplishment that all of our colleges should be proud of and I'm proud of all of you for all your hard work to make sure that this was done. Since the last board meeting, and I'm trying to get this in in two minutes because at the board retreat, we discussed that we can't really speak longer than two minutes because we're setting a bad example from everybody else that's not allowed to do that. So I'm just going to read the list of things I attended since the last board meeting. The Saddleback College Annual Employee Award Ceremony, the Saddleback College Vets Program End of the Year Award Ceremony, the Irvine Valley College Forensic Banquet, the Saddleback College Scholarship Award Ceremony, the Saddleback College Scholar Baller Banquet at Saddleback College, Tony Lippold's wonderful event for athletes that have very high GPA, the OCB, the Orange County School Boards Association Fiscal Update, the Irvine Valley College Scholarship Ceremony, the Saddleback College Human Services Graduation Ceremony, Saddleback College Commencement, Irvine Valley College Commencement, Tony Lippold's Retirement Luau, the KSBR Birthday Bash. I listened to a CCLC webinar on legislative issues pertaining to the community colleges, the South Orange County Economic Coalition Update, and three special board meetings, which all the board members attended. As to the Orange County Community College Legislative Task Force, which I founded many years ago, even though the year has ended, our bills are still being considered in the House and I'm very happy that some of the advocacy that we did for our veterans has been, funding for our veterans has been successful made it through appropriations. And our veteran centers and directors and students have also been actively involved in this statewide effort. And this is a very important milestone for our veterans and for our state. So I'm very proud of all of you and thank you so much.
Thank you. Trustee Witt.
Thank you. I attended nine events this past May and all of them were great and I could say ditto to everyone here and for the sake of time, because we have a huge agenda. I do want to just point out that I really enjoyed the awards and I enjoyed hearing about the students and especially the student awards, like liberal arts, being that I'm in the sciences, I love going there and just seeing what they were doing and what they wrote. It was wonderful. I want to tell you how much I appreciated that. I didn't go to three very important events because I wasn't quite in the same operating room or in the same hospital as trustee Wright, but I had to have surgery the day before commencement and my doctor wouldn't let me sit on stage although I said I was going to. And so it was really sad for me to miss those and really sad for me to miss Tony's roast. So also I missed the IVC scholarships because I wanted to be there and share in their celebration as I did at Saddleback's. The conference I went to in Washington DC with President Jamal was phenomenal. I have to say, every minute was intense and it was a growing experience for me. I had never rubbed elbows with VIPs of that nature before and they're human. And it was a growing experience and I think very worthwhile for our district. I'd like to welcome trustee, student trustee Jordan Larson. Welcome, and I know we'll have a great time. I appreciate you wanting to sit with us again. All right, hope you all have a great summer.
Thank you trustee Witt. That's a good segue to student trustee Larson. Do you have anything else to add from your comments earlier?
None to report.
Thank you and welcome again. All right, now we have the chancellor's report.
Good evening. Even though it's summer, we still have a lot of activity that's been happening and it's been busier than ever. And then there's been a lot of positive news and things happening. Congratulations to both IVC and Saddleback Foundations because I was very thrilled to learn that both college foundations have raised record-breaking amounts for student scholarship funds this year. And this is indeed a monumental milestone for both and will provide much more opportunities to students than ever before. And I want to recognize and thank the college foundation executive directors, their teams, and their boards for their leadership and our students will certainly be the beneficiary of all their hard work. Congratulations. I'm happy also to congratulate the college both for receiving their positive accreditation reports from the Accreditation Commission. And thank you to everyone who worked tirelessly on this effort. I know those reverse cycles are really, really hard to do and your efforts are much valued. So thank you again for all that work. Lastly, I want to say that summer is often a time for planning and reflection and preparing for the next year and this summer is going to be no different. We're going to be working very hard on discussing and planning for budget, staffing, and change management. There's a lot of change that's going to be happening. We have the basic aid recommendations and intended budget presentations you're going to hear tonight and we're going to be doing a lengthier one, a presentation that is, for the adopted budget in a couple months. You heard about the early retirement incentive plan and I want to say that we're very happy for all those retirees who have decided to take that plan and thank you for your service and your dedication to the district. Congratulations. But it's also very bittersweet because we're going to miss all of you and you've been a part of our community for so many years and so it's going to be hard to replace you. We're going to be working really hard this summer to talk about budget and organizational and personnel planning and you'll hear more about that to come. So with that, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. College presidents' reports. Why don't we start out with IVC?
I was just about to defer to my colleague here, but that's okay. I'll go ahead. First of all, it's great to see you trustee Wright. I'm glad you're feeling better. You look great. And Jordan, it's good to see you back again and look forward to working with you. Well, it's been a very busy summer. We're supposed to be taking it down a notch, isn't happening. In terms of accreditation, just one thing to say is that the last cycle was a good one. This one was really quite a bit better, especially in terms of the commendations. And so I hope you'll take the opportunity to read the team report. There's a real flavor in that that's well worth reading. But the point I want to make is that none of that can happen without the leadership of the board and the chancellor and setting the tone for all of us to follow. And I saw that during our process and I'm confident that that helped in our success and thank you for that. We just got back from the Fifth National Institute on Guided Pathways. There's a total of six, so we have one more to go. It's a national movement. You're going to hear all about this in the July meeting, so I won't go into detail at this point. And then we're also engaging in the California Guided Pathways Project as well. Had the opportunity to speak at the summit in Bakersfield just recently. And then finally, coming up for me is going back east again for the President's Academy Executive Committee Meeting. It's a portion of the American Association of Community Colleges. And this is where we advise Walter Bumpus on the work of the AACC as well as the ACCT. So it'll be a very busy meeting for us. I think there's a vacation in there somewhere, but I haven't found it yet. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have Kathy Worley on behalf of Todd Burnett.
Good evening. Our summer session is well underway. We now have all three sessions going and it looks like enrollments are up slightly, so I'm pleased with that. Tonight, you're going to be hearing a presentation about our KSBR merger, but I wanted to set the stage for that a little bit. This is a project that's been under discussion for over a decade. Originally, it was something that Terry Woodell, the previous director for Broadcast Services, had brought forward. It came to the colleges as a formal presentation first in 2012. And I think this is something that is just incredible in terms of the amount of coverage it will grant us and we've got back some figures that you'll be seeing tonight. But after 2012, we did engineering studies. But after 2012, we did engineering studies, we've hired consultants, and in October of 2015, we received approval from all of you to go forward and really explore the concept and begin to negotiate contracts with CSUN. And the results of that work you're going to see tonight as the presentation is made. I'd like to take a minute to acknowledge the two presidents that were involved, Todd Burnett and Diane Harrison from CSUN, Teri Widdell, Deborah Fitzsimmons, who's been very instrumental in making this happen, CM Brobbot, who's come up and done a lot of the hard work in the last couple of months, making sure that the negotiations and the process that we're going into are sound, and business services, and there was an entire list that I'm not going to cover. I also want to mention that the Vets 5K Run was participated in by two of our administrators, Kevin O'Connor and Carol, Carol, where's, there she is, Carol Hilton, and Carol won a medal for her class. And then last but not least, I want to introduce you to Dan Klaus. We've hired a replacement for Tony Lippold. Dan is joining us today. It's his first day, and he comes to us with over 13 years' experience in community college athletics, teaching, and coaching. He's an assistant dean at Sarito's College for a number of years, and they've got an exceptional program to be proud of, so we're confident that he's going to continue the excellence of scholar athletics and the high standards that have been set in recent years. His backgrounds have to do with bachelor's degree in, let's see, health management from Southern Missouri State University. His master's degree is in arts and education with an emphasis on two-year college physical education from Western Carolina University, and he has experience with most of, or actually all of the departments that we have in our division. So he was going to be an asset to everything from advanced, from the adaptive kinesiology, dance, as well as all the sports programs. So we're just excited to have him. So Dan, would you please stand?
Thank you, Kathy, and welcome aboard, Dan. And I've read through Todd's written report, and maybe it's his retirement, but it's the shortest report I think he's ever placed in our agenda. Next up, we have ASG Saddleback College.
Here we go.
And I think a new face.
Yes. Good evening. My name is Erica Delamar, and I'm so excited and honored to be serving as Associated Student Government President this year for Saddleback College. Since the last time I came to the meeting and introduced myself, I attended the Saddleback College Commencement Ceremony, the Foundation Retreat, which was very insightful, two consultation council meetings, the Veterans Banquet, and I also participated in the Veterans and Sammy 5K that was held two Sundays ago on campus. So I'm very excited for ASG to be a part of that next year with the planning and processing, and I believe they raised a little over $15,000, which is really exciting. We are, as far as ASG, we're still in the process of appointing officers, but we have all of our directors appointed, so we will be wrapping up with that by the end of next week. And currently with IVC, we've been meeting about once a month to see how we can collaborate next year, and we've been planning our joint retreat that will be held in August, so we're really excited for the upcoming year. Thank you.
That's excellent. Have you done joint retreats in the past?
We had, we, last year, we met up at Boomers for a little end of retreat celebration, but this year, we're going to be doing some training together, so we're really excited.
Great. That's excellent.
Thank you.
Okay. ASG, IVC.
Hello, hello, hello. Good evening, everyone. So my name is Samantha Zan, and I will be the upcoming ASG of IVC president for this year, and I look forward to working with you all. And so for the events that I've attended personally, I've attended IVC commencement and Saddleback commencement, and also the IVC Scholarship Breakfast. So as for what ASG of IVC has been doing, so far, we've been conducting a second round of interviews to fill in the leftover positions not previously filled for the last election for our student government. We also held a open forum for Taviana's passing, so around 100 students and faculty from IVC and Saddleback combined showed up to the forum, and Ms. Lucy Hendricks was also able to show up as well, so I appreciate her for coming to that. And so over 50 students and faculty attended her funeral service as well. As Erica mentioned, we have been doing joint meetings, and so that's been super exciting. And basically, it's been really great. We're looking forward to the training in August of what we're going to do together, and we'll keep, we'll keep having monthly meetings up until August, so we'll have one in July as well. And so, and then lastly, I've been having meetings with my advisor, Sessa Hurd-Johnson, to come up with plans to see what we can do for the pre-fall training of the new officers for student government in August. So that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations. Welcome, both of you. All right. Do we have any board requests for reports? Seeing none, let's move on to our discussion item, which is 4.1, Basic Aid Allocation Recommendation for Fiscal Years 2000, Fiscal Year 2017, 2018.
So I'd like to introduce Acting Vice Chancellor of Business Services, Kim McCord, who's going to do the report tonight for us. And then we also have in our audience Davie Kachatrian, Brandy Delena, Carol Hilton, and many others, oh, Barbara Mucci as well, who, and several other Bark members are here as well, who will be able to contribute and answer any questions that the board might have. So with that.
I'll walk you through the presentation. First, we just want to remind you that the way we developed this process came from accreditation recommendation and a couple of funds staff, and that we needed to develop a process to allocate funds based on planning, and we needed it to be participative, transparent, and open. So we developed BP and AR 3110, and those are our guidelines for how we distribute all of the basic aid funds. It developed the committee, the Basic Aid Allocation Recommendation Committee, or Council, sorry, called Bark. And we, our approach is to be conservative. We want to spend the money on one-time expenses. The majority is in capital facilities. We also have major IT projects and any debt, which includes our Recovery Benefit Trust Fund, and then we have some one-time things for the trustee elections and whether you select out of the seat. So Bark did need this spring to do their work. We received the prioritized plans from the colleges and from the District Technology Committee, and we are recommending $68 million in funding for our projects. So the chancellor and president support all of these for the numbers. So at this point, these numbers came from earlier in the spring. Because we do our work, we need to estimate these early. So these numbers have already changed, as if the maybe they'll change again when we close the books. But at the time in March, we had estimated in any balance of $17 million. That comes from the contingency we have for the current year, plus return funds from projects, and then excess taxes that come in throughout the year. And then we expect receipts of $64.8 million. Now again, that's net. We get our property taxes, we fund our DRAC model to the colleges, and this has been net amount. So that totaled $81.9 million. We have our contingency that we reestablished. We have a small amount that's not allocated, because we still have one project we're working on, and that nets out $68.1 million. So just an overall recap, we have $17.3 million in long-term obligations, capital projects of $32 million, another five for some special projects, renovation projects of $3.5 million, and then technology of $9.1 million. So these are the listed capital projects. Most of them are additions to projects that we already have on the books. They just need a little final equipment money. The two big ones in the middle, of course, are Gateway and IVC FinArx, that we hope to get funded by the state in the next few years. This is not still fully funded on map. There's about $8 million left on it, but each project that we still need to fund, and enough time in the year to be fully funded throughout. And on the bottom, you'll notice we have $3 million as our first installment on our ADA Transition Plan, so you should, you remember, we did a thorough investigation of our colleges, and this is just the first piece to get going on some of those items. This is the technology plans that were funded. The category A is our ongoing items of the student system that we continually update for state compliance and the requests that the colleges make. And then the second is our ERP HL finance system update. And then the other categories are our district live things, mostly security, our new service desk, and then category C is the college projects, which is mostly AB and desktop research. These are the planning and technical legal consultants. We only add to these every year. They all help in all of our endeavors, the biggest one being the ATUP site development this year, $1.9 million. And then the very last one is our new educational facilities master plan that we'll need to start working on, so that's $900,000 set aside for that. So those are all the details, and they will be included in, they are included in the tentative budget this afternoon. If you have any questions.
Okay. We might, and we do. Trustee Prendergast.
I'm just curious. You mentioned that the numbers have already changed, up, down?
You'll see it in the tentative budget, but the any balance is going to be a little higher. The state funded some more money to the colleges, which meant there was a little less in taxes, but then that was about the same.
Okay. Sit.
No, there's no sole people funded yet either. Just, there's no sole people funded, so.
Right. Trustee Milchker.
I'm just wondering on the makeup of the Bark Committee. I know it's a 21-member participatory committee, so is it the chancellor and 10 people from, 10 from Saddleback and 10 from Irvine Valley?
So the chair of the committee is the Vice Chancellor of Business Services, but I sort of kept that this year because I didn't want the process to be inconsistent from previous years, we've been making such good progress. Then we have, there's academic senate participation, we have classified senate and CCA on it. Both vice presidents administrative services are on that. Vice Chancellor Barbara Mucci is on it. We have, let's see, Kim McCord is on it. We have the IT directors from both colleges on it. Who am I missing? Oh, Brandy Delena, of course, is on it. Of course, we couldn't have that without Brandy. So it's 21 people totally across the district, chair governance, as well as key people that would know, you know, the facilities and IT side to be able to, and finance.
Do the shared governance people from all the shared governance groups select a different person every year to serve on the committee?
Some stay on, like, for instance, Kathy Schmider was academic president for several years in a row, so she was on it for, I think, the entire time I've been here, where other people do shift and come on and off. Usually, there's a lot of consistency between the Capital Improvement Committee kick and people on Bark, as well as some DTC folks who also are on Bark. So it really is a good group, though. They work really well together.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Lang.
Yes, thank you. I just had actually a couple of questions that I wanted to ask of Vice Chancellor Mucci on the technology areas that are being funded through basic aid. One was, I just, I wasn't familiar with KACE or CASE, what that is, and then the second one is, I noticed we'd allocated some money towards the student success roadmap. Was that my academic plan, or is that something else? So maybe you could enlighten me.
Okay. Regarding your first question, CASE is a product from Dell. It is a help desk product. A grown-up version of a help desk with more features is a service desk. A few years ago, for the first time, we all standardized on one common platform, and that was the CASE platform. We've outgrown that platform, and so we're looking to move up to the next layer, which is called a service desk. Regarding your second question about the student success roadmap, it's a new project. Tonight, I'll also highlight Smart Schedule, which is another new project we have, but it builds upon the success of MAP and Sherpa, but what it is designed to do is to bring together all the information necessary for the student's success into one location. It turns out to be very hard to do, because a lot of information is siloed in various other systems. So we've had a great deal of success with our student success dashboard, bringing some of those student success metrics directly to each and every student. We want to expand that with the roadmap.
Thank you. And then I just have, for Kim, for Bark, do you guys operate on the basis of consensus? So are all the recommendations that we're receiving tonight unanimous from Bark?
It's not thoroughly simple, because again, these projects sound prioritized, so we get everybody's priorities. It's not like we're taking things from the bottom and moving things around. I mean, our directions are very clear. Is what BP and AR.
So there's no dissent? It's all unanimous agreement to move forward with these recommendations? Okay. Thank you.
Just to add to that, as part of the BP and AR 3110, if there is any kind of dissent, then we have to communicate that clearly to the chancellor, so we can, we can understand what that is before we go ahead and make final recommendations to the board.
All right. I see no further questions, so thank you, Kim. Okay, we're now on to our consent calendar. And do I have any requests for polls?
I would just like to ask a couple of questions on 511 and 522. I don't want to poll, I just have a question.
So 511, what's that?
Oh, all right.
She's pulling it.
I'm pulling.
Do you want to pull them?
Sounds so harsh.
Do you want to pull them?
Yes, I just have a couple of questions.
Actually, technically, technically, she doesn't have to pull them if she asks questions, because when the motion is made on the balance of the consent calendar, you don't have to pull.
I thought she just said she wanted to pull them.
She, well, she has a choice.
All right. What is your preference, Trustee Witt?
I just want to ask the question, please.
Okay.
I don't need them to be pulled.
Okay.
Pulling 511?
511 and 522.
So they're not being, you're not pulling them?
Mm-hmm. 2-2.
Okay. Trustee Prendergast.
I guess on that vein, I will not pull 5.17.
I see no requests, but I am going to pull several items, and you'll hear why in a second. So I'm pulling 5.5, 5.7, 5.11, 5.13, 5.14, 5.2, 5.5, 5.7, 5.11, 5.13, 5.14, 5.20, 5. and 5.22. All right. So I think we need a motion to move the remainder of the items, and we have, Trustee.
Not so fast. Not so fast? Okay.
Oh, sorry. My bad.
I'm going to pull 514.
Okay. 5.14. I had it pulled.
Yes, he did.
Yeah.
Yes, he did.
Sorry for going so fast. Okay. So we have a motion, so to move the remainder of the items, motion from Trustee Prendergast, second from Trustee Milchker. And any further questions on the item? Yeah? All right, let's go ahead.
We have the questions, and then we have to talk.
But he pulled them. But he pulled, he pulled them.
Yeah.
I have a question on 5.17.
Okay. Trustee Prendergast.
I just wanted to know what the rate was being increased from. You're telling us what they're asking for on their new rate, but not what it was going up from. And I just wanted to know if we knew that, because it might be helpful.
Who's the question directed to?
Whoever's going to answer it.
I understand that.
I know, you don't know the answer.
I don't. I wish I did.
The exhibit only asks what the rate they want to raise it to. It doesn't say anywhere in the paperwork what it was.
I won't be able to answer that tonight, because I don't have that information with me. But just to be clear what this contract is, it's for legal services related to Form 700s and conflict of interest. We have not had to use this company for four years and not had to pay them, but they do increase their rates usually by a cost of living increase each year. So we need to have it, we didn't have a new contract in place for them, so we need to just keep it active in case we needed to refer to them for those kind of things.
I have no problem. I just curious how much they're raising the rate.
I'm guessing it's probably a 3% COLA, but I'd have to check.
But that would be 3% for each year since 2013?
I can't answer that at all. I cannot answer that.
Right, but it doesn't say what it was. I'm just curious how much of a jump. I'm just curious how much of a jump is it? Like, is it going $100 per hour or $5 per hour?
No, it's not that.
I mean, we don't know that.
We don't know.
I do not have that information tonight.
Do you know what they raised the rate, what their intention is going from the current fiscal year to next fiscal year?
Right. So you're saying we can infer that it's $10 for the last three years, so it's going up 40?
You can infer it, but you may not be correct.
Ah, okay.
All right.
Usually, in case of legal counsel, they'll, they'll hold some categories the same, and then they'll increase some categories, like you could see the clerks are the same, but, so I don't know, we don't have that information. I apologize for that.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, let's go ahead and vote on these items. We have a unanimous trustee, sorry, unanimous trustee yes vote, and student advisory, did you vote? Yes vote. I don't know why it didn't come up. Yeah, but not on mine. It's all right.
Not on mine.
All right. The reason, the reason why I pulled these items is 5.5, 5.7, 5.11, 5.13, 5.14, 5.20, 5.22's a little separate is because I just wanted an explanation and understanding among the board and the public of what items are put on the consent calendar and what's the criteria we use to place items under the consent calendar. Because, I mean, I used to think it was based on dollar amounts. I'm not sure exactly what it is now, so I'm going to ask our interim chancellor to explain that.
Sure. That's a good question because I'm not sure if the public even knows how we do that. So it used to be it was just dollar amount. The former chancellor would sort of use a threshold of about $500,000. But what we do is we actually lowered that dollar amount to around the $350,000 range. However, that's not the only criteria for deciding whether something should be on the consent calendar versus approval item separate in the sixes. What we look at is, are the contracts, for instance, that are on here, already on a legally approved template? In that case, the form for the contract is something you've already seen and approved before previously? And is the type of service something that's normal, standard, out of the ordinary type of stuff, like repairs, maintenance, those kind of things? If I think that it's something that's going to require discussion and/or something that's unique and we want to share with you, then we obviously, even if it's like $10,000, we would put it on the approval item as something separate. So we use like a couple of different criteria. Dollar amount's one of them. It's the type of the item where we think that it's something unique and probably needs, warrants some discussion or explanation to you, or you'll probably have just questions. And also that what the contract is, is a unique contractor, is it something that's a standard one that we've used previously?
So it's a combination. It's just not based on the dollar amounts, for example. You could have a, because what struck me about this particular consent calendar is that it was very deep. There are many more items than usual, and there were higher, some higher dollar amounts, and that's why I wanted the question clarified. So it sounds to me like it's some kind of combination. It's not just dollar amount, there's some discretion, prior votes on contractors, consultants, and so forth.
Yeah. We tried to sort of keep it in line. If we know you have a special interest in something particular and it's, or that's been something that has generated board discussion or interest in the past, we probably would put that on as an approval item. It's sort of a judgment thing. It's hard to, you know, make those decisions sometimes. And then we also, you know, the whole idea of having a consent calendar is to keep board business to sort of move and go through as, as properly as you can, but also have enough discussion on things, so it's always a balance.
Okay. Thank you for the explanation. And then on 5.22, or did, did you have a question? Oh, there it is, sorry. Trustee Witt.
Are we...
Yeah, we're on...
Are we done with 5.5? I had a question, though.
Go ahead.
Okay, I just, maybe President Rockmore could just share with me, when we talked about the monument signs, what are we talking about on here? I was thinking, what signs are we talking about? And also, I noticed SSK contractors, I see them several times, and I mean, well, I've been on the, I've seen SSK contractors several times, so that's, there you go. As you just said, we've used them in the past. But I'm just curious.
Yes, in this case, and I believe, Brandy, correct me if I'm wrong, the entrance...
I figured that would be one of them.
Yeah. So currently, we have two large black monoliths that do absolutely nothing. And because they, they were marquees, they've been burned out for a very long time, they do not operate anymore, and they, they look horrible to the community. So we're going through the process of modernizing those. Those two will be completely removed, and newer, more standard marquees of a higher resolution these days. I think they were put in well over 10 years ago, if not 15 years ago, those were installed. So this project will modernize the entrance marquees.
Great. That's important. I always, especially when you're coming into a college, you want to see how it's advertised.
Yes.
Good for you. Thanks.
Thank you. Trustee Lang.
Yes, the only thing that troubled me about this one a little bit was the difference between the, the low bid and I guess the, the next bid, which was non-responsive even, was like $214,000. And that just seemed like on this size of a project to be a, a large discrepancy, but maybe Stalina might want to comment about that.
Whenever we see a discrepancy like that between the lowest bid and the next low bid, we always ask them if perhaps they made an accounting error. It's entirely possible, and we did in this case, and they were fine with their price, so.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Trustee Prendergast.
I, when I first saw this, I saw it was just a refurbishment of the current signs. Is there any thought or plan to putting a new sign on the new entrance off Baranca?
Yes, there is. And we do have for the future, we have conduit that will go down and support a marquee. All of this happens through a process that you learned about tonight for basic aid. So a marquee for that entrance on Baranca, Laser Way, is not in the queue yet, but there will be a sign similar to the blue signs that you see currently at the entrance. That one won't go away, and we have those low-lying blue signs also at two other entrances on the campus, so we will have that.
Okay. And then seeing other, other questions on those items, on 5.22, I noticed that we've hired a consultant, oh. Right. Right.
I'll move that we approve 5.5.
Okay, right.
I'll second it.
Okay. Any, okay, any further questions? Let's go ahead and vote. It is unanimous trustee yes vote, and student advisory, yes? Just do thumbs up. Good, thank you. All right. So now we have to vote on 5.7. Is there a motion? Motion from trustee Lang. I'm watching it unfold. Motion, trustee Lang, second from trustee Prendergast. Any further discussions? Go ahead and vote on the item. And unanimous trustee yes vote, and a student advisory yes vote. Okay, 5.11. Is there a motion to approve?
No.
There is.
Wait.
Yes.
Our screen isn't moving.
Put on the floor. Yeah, push on the floor. A motion from trustee Prendergast, second from trustee Lang, and a question from trustee Witt.
Yes. I just had a question here for the superintendent of services. We just finished with our science building. Did we have the same company for this, for the science? Are we on 511?
Yes, we are.
Five eleven.
Okay.
We're on 5.1, 5.11.
Yes.
So MEW Consulting Services, which is 5.11, serves, serves the college for specific smaller projects that the college might have. Those would be like under like the million dollar, $2 million mark.
Okay.
There's a lot of projects like that across Saddleback College, and it's a lot to manage. So that's what this, these services are, so totally unrelated to construction services for our construction.
Okay. Yeah, I saw that it was far less money, but being the same contractor, I wondered if we have the same mule consult. Okay.
There is a motion, and there's a second. So let's go ahead and vote on the item. And we have a unanimous trustee yes vote, student advisory yes vote. Okay, we're on to 5.13. Is there a motion? It's coming up. Motion from trustee Lang to approve, second from trustee Wright. Any requests to speak? Okay, let's go ahead and vote on the item. It's unanimous trustee yes vote, student advisory yes vote. 5.14. I feel like there's someone whispering in my ear. A motion from trustee Milchacher, and a second from trustee Jay. No requests to speak. Let's go ahead and vote on the item. Unanimous trustee yes vote, and a student advisory yes vote. Okay, 5.20. A motion from trustee Milchacher, and a second from trustee Prendergast. I don't see any requests to speak, and so let's go ahead and vote on the item. We have unanimous trustee yes vote, and student advisory yes vote. Motion from trustee Milchacher, second from trustee Wright. I do have a question, and trustee Witt goes first. Trustee Witt.
Yes, I just wanted to ask a question, because this was a question for me at, at the beginning. Seeing that we're adding a bit more money to the EdRock, Edge Rock technology, I just wanted to ask, when we have a vendor who does help us on all the Workday and, and it's, she's, she or he has been around for quite a while, having been through two different hospitals in implementing Epic, which was quite an event, I was just wondering, and I think I brought this up once before, have we ever thought about using super users of our own, meaning our own staff? I found that to be very helpful, especially with the physicians, so I'm thinking it might be very helpful, especially with deans or directors, and that might have some problems with Workday and using our own staff. And they were called super users, and you weren't afraid to go to them. Just putting it out there.
That's a good question. So two things. One is this contract is rated to training, training services and training materials, so that's what this is. They're not implementation services or anything like that.
Oh, it's not implementation.
Yeah, it's training related. But back to the super user concept, I actually had proposed that at the beginning of the project when we were starting, before we even started implementing. The union, CSEA, was opposed to having pay, we wanted to pay them like a stipend as well to be able to take part and use the classified, like the senior admins and things like that. So the proposal wasn't supported by classified, so we sort of had to go with a different model, so at the time.
Well, I respect their decision, but having been...
But they are highly involved. We have a Workday Training and Communication Group. Matter of fact, it's meeting this Wednesday.
Okay.
And we get their input through that group. We pick like people who are, really are super users. It's just that we don't call them that, and we don't pay them for that, but they attend the meeting as we can, and we get their input because that's, it's very valuable. We're not going to have a successful project if we don't continue to keep that communication open.
Thank you.
So who, who's EdRock training? Should they, they train? Like, who are they training? Like, is it a train the trainer model, train, like, and who are the trainers?
So we lost our trainer, Caitlin Barnhill. I don't know if you remember her or you, she's, was really awesome. That was through Strata Information Group. She's now taken a different role within Strata. So we brought in EdRock, EdRock to sort of close the gap, so we would have continuity in our training program for Workday. For instance, we get new employees every month, and so we do monthly training for all new employees, depending on their role at the, at the colleges. It could be faculty, it could be staff, it could be people who do, need to know hiring stuff, or people who need to know the finance or both. We get managers, have to know the manager role, so to develop those materials. We have upgrades that come in twice a year, and they help develop, develop new materials and new, new things like that. We just now hired an employee training manager that was, been recruited for a while. The colleges wanted two people. They said it, that's so important. And so the consultant will help fill in the gaps, but the training manager's now going to be taking the lead. And so the person hasn't started yet, but that'll be coming soon. What we want to do is develop videos and things so people can have multiple ways that they learn, and they can be able to go to things instead of having to call people or call the service desk for problems, and it could be a simple question. So that person's going to be going out, getting focus groups, and sort of see what the training needs are and develop a program around this now.
So has the situation with Workday improved? As you know, this issue came up under your predecessor. When we had a listening session, when they talked extensively, we heard a lot from the staff, even the faculty, some deans about, about Workday. So has it gotten better?
I think it's improved. We still have work to do. We had a health check, and there was a lot of input provided by the consultants who came in to sort of see how we are using Workday and how we can do it better. One area where I think we need to focus on and have been focusing on is our hiring processes and some things we can do differently. They're still a little cumbersome, but that's, that's part of, part of what we're doing to improve, and that's why we're using a training and communication group. They gave us a lot of feedback, and we're working with them to identify areas that we need to tweak the processes within Workday. It's not necessarily Workday, it's the processes that we put in Workday. So that's all human behind that.
Thank you. I think we can go ahead and vote on the item. And I think student trustee, it is working now, so we can continue to do the thumbs up, but we have a unanimous trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. Now we're on to 6.1, general action items, and we're now on to our tentative budget for fiscal years 2017, 2018.
So we have acting vice chancellor Kim McCord and CM Bronbon here tonight, as well as Carol and Devit, who will be here to provide answers to questions as well. Just to remind everybody that the tentative budget is our draft budget that we use to get started for the year, starting July 1st. We are, we just have the state budget that's been approved, and we are waiting for our year-end final figures. So you're going to have a lot more information when we do our adopted budget, and that's the more lengthy workshop that we are going to plan for September 11th. And so this one is going to be a more shorter version for tonight.
You can go read and cover that first slide perfectly. I do want to thank the colleges, those, the Charles Offices and our county office with Benjamin Mathias. Can you hear me? Get closer. I want to thank them all. They, they worked really hard to get the budget balanced in time to get to tonight. So just a reminder on our board philosophy on budget, we want to ensure the wise and prudent use of our public resources. We want to promote financial strength and stability and maximize our educational opportunities for students. Sorry, I read, I know the Montague stories. These are all the 10 guidelines that we have. I'm going to go into these in more depth when we have our budget workshop, and I think it's September now. But definitely the college area allocations, just a reminder, we use the state SB 361 model for those allocations. We went over the basic aid process, and we also want to avoid deficit financing as much as possible, and we'll touch on that a little bit as well. So this is an overview. Our general fund is 315 million. Our unrestricted operating budget is 287, with another 62 in our restricted, which is our categoricals, grants, and contracts. And then another 453 million in all of our other funds, for a total of 803. It's the biggest budget I've seen.
Wow.
One of our assumptions, this is based on the governor's may re-buy, so of course we know the legislatures have done some more work census, but this is what we have at the time we built the budget. So the state call of 1.56%, we expect that to stick. Growth funding is 0%. There is some small amount provided at the state, but we don't anticipate earning any of that this year. The base increase, we were a little conservative. The number that it seemed like both houses approved is actually more like 2.78%. So you'll see that reflected in our adopted budget. Property tax revenue, this is still a conservative estimate. When I talked to the county, they said between 4% and 6%, and we've been actually exceeding those estimates the last couple of years, so we're still on the conservative side, just in case. And of course, the roll-up fees are staying constant. Some other assumptions on our expense side, salary increases, you know, we have a negotiated You know, we have our negotiated increases. So there's 3% for all bargaining units and managers this next year. Our persons service rates are up. There, we have a slide on that. The health and welfare, we estimated it at 6%. All those numbers are now in. It's actually going to be closer to 5.4% for adopted budgets. So we'll see that reduce. Unemployment and workers comp, we haven't changed. Workers comp has went down slightly because we've had some good experience there, which is good. So last assumption, 7.5% reserve is what we have in board policy, is 13.4 million. Property liability is the same amount. So we've been, again, good experience on our risk side. The categorical budgets, we don't have a lot of those allocations, so we just estimate them at 95%. And we do have to have you approve how we spend our EPA funds that were in legislation. As you know, last fall, they did amend a bill to extend the income taxes. So we will continue to get this, I think, through 2030 now. Otherwise, they were in a sunset. And we do spend those on part-time faculty salary benefits to make sure we aren't making any permanent commitments with those funds. So this is the updated basic aid table that I referred to earlier. So the balance, instead of 17 million, we're projecting any balance to be 18 million. And the receipts for basic aid is down from 64 to 63. And again, that's because additional resources went to the colleges' income. And so the unallocated changed slightly. We still have the contingency and the same 68 million that we allocated. So this is just a summary of those categories. We covered this earlier, but the bottom bullet, just a reminder, we put our normal cost, 4.6 million, in the OPEB trust. And we are funded adequately right now, so there's no additional money going in. And we're making our final installment on that pension stability trust that should cover those pension increases through 2021. All right, so we're going to cover some trends.
Good evening. My role tonight is not where we were, not where we are, but where we are going. What are the trends that which is either helping us or what kind of work we need to do ahead of us? The first thing, as you already see, that we do have a difficulty in a tentative budget and even adopted budget, is not within the board guidelines. So we have to use a one-time money in order for it to balance the budget. So we are working with you and with the colleges to make sure. And again, South Orange County is large sheet. It's not easy to turn around that fast. So we wanted to make sure that everybody knows that it will take a while for us to get the, how to present the balance budget going forward. Income, expenses, balance out. We don't have to use one time. The second thing is the personnel cost. As you can see, that we have 88.8% as a part of our whole budget of the personnel cost. Up and down the state, we use an 85-15 rule. 85%, we can spend it on personnel, 15% on discretionary. So little by little, we are trying to find a way to reduce that of our personnel cost so it allows us to have some more discretionary dollars in the future years as well. But the third bullet is a little bit more harder for us because as you can see, the state is not keeping up with the cola that we require, the growth dollar that we should have. And at the same time, we have the same expenses that are going increasing year after year. Basically, on the next page, as you will see, these are the trends, some of the personnel costs, the health and development cost, 5.4% increase, but you only got 1.56% cola and doesn't go too far. So we have to cover with our own money. Stores and course rate increases, we will give a little bit more detail on the following plan, but it'll probably be about $2.5 million more every year for next four to five years. The negotiated salary increases, we have provided good salary increases appropriate for last two years. Again, including current year, which is a previous increase. And besides that, we always have staff and college increases. We have, then you increase the number of positions, reclassification, stipends and other additional costs. So the cost side is always going up. So we need to find a way how we can keep our things in check in the future. This particular chart is showing you the course and stores rating increases. You can see at the bottom line, for '16, '17, we spent 2.6 billion additional compared to the prior year. This year, we will be spending 2.5 million, following a 2.5 million. So every year, we have to cover with more money for the courses and stores. And this is really, really causing us, not only to our district, but up and down the state because there is no end to it, the way we see it. Budget impact on scheduling, the majority of the money we spend at the 50% line, as you already have seen, the 52 to 54% of our dollar goes into the classroom. So we really need to find a way to look into our scheduling pattern in the future to see how we are going to get better in doing our scheduling pattern in the future. The last four or five years, that's what we have seen, that we have added more sections, but we were not able to get more FPIs out of it. Matter of fact, we have added more sections and we have locked FPIs at one of the colleges. So we really need to find a way how we can do a better job working side by side with the guided pathway so that our student can be successful. But at the same time, we have money to pay for it in the classroom for them to be successful at the same time. And again, when we come back for the adopted budget, we will tell a little bit more individual consequences where we are facing the challenges in more detail that we will be providing it here. On the next step, on the next step, as you can see, the, what it will be included in adopted budget when we come back to you in end of August, early part of September, a little bit more budget workshop so we all can be more informed about what we are facing, the challenges going forward in the future. Budget status meeting taking place at both colleges. We have opened those conversations, not only with each colleges, but collectively as a joint, as a district and both colleges together, to find a way that we really, really need to come together because impact with Irvine Valley College gives impact to Saddleback as well.
Absolutely.
The district also, so we are all in together. So we really need to find a solution, working together, going forward. We really need to capitalize the opportunities that we have in front of us. We have, there are over 100 people that are going to be leaving the South Orange County Community College district for the course. So we really, we really need to find a way to see exactly how we're going to replace those to listen in the future and how they need to contribute in adding, you know, the value for the district to go forward in the future years to balance the budget as well. This is our, the next step continues. We will look at the more realistic projections for the future years. So we are not going to be waiting for the state to tell us what it is going to be looking like. But we need to look at two, three years ahead and what lies ahead of us. They will be looking at the multi-year approach as well. Where we want to go in the future. We really need to get engaged with the key stakeholder early enough before we even present the budget. If we are not able to do that, then they will not know exactly how we can find a way to balance the budget. Balancing the budget is not the responsibility only for the vice president. This is everybody's responsibility. It is everybody's dollar. And everybody will be held accountable at the dean level, department level, vice president level, because we all have to come together. Because sometimes if you're like the CEO of the district or vice president is the one always carrying the load and they become saying, "Naysayer." But we don't want to say no to you. We just want to make sure that we can manage our resources going forward. Our analogy is, majority of our challenges are if we can manage our resources better, majority of our challenges will hold in the future. We will be looking at more resources, what are the resources we can bring to the district as well. On the next step, revenues are not keeping the space on ongoing marketing as we have mentioned here before. We are using one-time revenues for us to balance the budget type now. That trend was started a few years back and we would like to see how quickly we can start. As I said, this relationship is not going to happen overnight. We really need to work together. We will address at the adopted budget, all the strategies. So from, we started working with the colleges since February, little by little. Now we are getting their conversation a little bit more engaged, so they can do a little bit better. We are looking at all, all department levels, scrutiny at campus level to see what they can do better to improve their expenses. And somehow, if you hear something from some department, some individuals or people, they will, they have some surprise. This is not going to be business as usual. I just want everybody to know that. We really, really take this budget, balancing budget very seriously. Because if we continuously going to do the same thing, I cannot guarantee the same different result. The result will remain the same. So it is not going to be the business as usual. And with that, I can open any questions?
Trustee Milchiker. By the way, thank you for your presentation.
Yeah, thank you for your presentation, even though it's a little bit thought provoking. My first question is, if we grow, if the colleges grow in enrollment, and I'm talking about both colleges, if they grow in enrollment, do we bring in any additional dollars into our district?
Well, that's a good question.
It's a very good question.
When you are, when you are, when you are down there first, you have to come out of. You know, when you are in a ditch, you have to come out on the surface first before you go forward. So our situation right now, that we are not able to meet our baseline FPIs currently. We are way below our baseline FPI. So in order to get any growth money from the state, we have to be at the baseline. So if, say, for example, if you had a 10,000, which is our baseline, but we are only at 9,500, first I have to bring it to the 10,000 before I can embark on the growth money. The second problem was.
Well, the question I have is, we are a basic aid district. So I thought as a basic aid district, we're raising all of our money locally from local property taxes. So how will we bring any additional money in by growing?
Okay, so let's, let's do this scenario a little differently. Because we are a basic aid district, but we are not allowed, we are not through the board policy, we are only giving the money to the colleges under SB 361 guidelines. So when the SB 361 guidelines, it does not allow to give any more additional dollars to the colleges because they are not grown, number one. Number two, our growth percentage is so small right now, it's only half a percent growth. Half a percent growth does not give you a whole lot of more money for us to provide to the colleges. So that's a difficult.
No, I don't, I'm sorry, I don't really fully understand this. If we grow in enrollment, will we bring in any additional money to the district?
No, you will not.
That's what I thought.
That's right.
Okay.
You will not bring in any new money. But you can allocate more money if you are above the baseline under SB 361 for the additional, additional dollars to the colleges.
Well, so, so the colleges on their DRAC model, on SB 361, they're, we're allocating the money to Saddleback College or to Irvine Valley College depending upon what their enrollment are. So Saddleback is trying to grow and Irvine Valley College is trying to grow because they'll bring in more money into their college to help them and help educate their students. But if this pie, if we're not bringing in any more money to the pie, we're just fighting each other for the same dollars?
That is not true.
Well, explain it to me because I don't understand it.
You're right, we do just have one big pot. After we fund the colleges based on SB 361, that's the amount that the extra goes to basic aid for our construction projects. So if more money goes to the colleges, there's less money for basic aid. So we, we don't get more money from the state, but we are able to give more money to the colleges for operating budget.
Can I add to that also? Besides the SB 361 model, the colleges also get local revenues. So they get state lottery revenues and some other lot, revenues such as save food service commissions and things like that. So there's also extra revenues that way. What I think we'll probably do, since it's been a while, we'll go over the DRAC model briefly at the adopted budget workshop to sort of go through it so you can understand it better.
Yeah, we're having an adopted budget workout. This has been bothering me for a number of years now.
Yeah, we'll go through that.
Because I, I don't want the two colleges to be competing against each other for growth. If we're not bringing any, any additional money, why are we doing this to ourselves? You know, and I'm, maybe this is the best model we have, but let's think about it again, okay?
Yes, so we'll go through that so you can see that that's not really necessarily the case.
Okay.
But we'll sort of explain it better, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. Trustee Lang.
But again, we will look at almost all the components of the budget. I will assure you that. So my background, we can see how we can balance the budget under SB 361 guidelines that we are following what the board has presented.
So I think, CM, you defined the definition of insanity, which is doing the same thing over and over again and getting different results. My question has to do with the early retirement incentive. I would have thought that would have brought down the labor percentage figures from the high amounts that you've indicated. So maybe you can describe to me how that sort of played out in terms of, obviously, there's a cost for the retirement incentive, but there are savings associated with that, more in the first year and then in years that follow, that again, I would have expected, would have brought down that high 80s or, you know, 90% that we're looking at in terms of labor costs relative to the total college budgets.
Sure, there's a couple of components we are talking about. The one that do with academics. We already know that we really need to bring back the faculty who are retired. So that's kind of a given because that's our base and budget classroom serving the student population. Then there is another opportunity for the district to look at the optimal staffing level at every department where they are working.
Yes, no, and I totally get that we're going to try and realign things so that, you know, we're as productive as we possibly can be. And that's certainly a component of bringing down the labor costs. But my question was really focused on the, how the early retirement incentive numbers play into the budget, budget figures.
The early incentive retirement number will help us to kind of manage to pay for it. Is that much of a difficulty? Our concern is how we can bring that 88% of our personnel cost to the management or to the 85% level. So eventually, the onus is on us to look at exactly, then we're looking at the replacement for every single plastic staff or managers or what are the opportunities that we have. And we still have to serve the students. We still have to provide them those services. And we wanted to make sure that the people we are hiring are more credible for us to provide the services. Or is there any room for us to improve upon going forward? That's the question.
Can I, can I just add to that?
Go ahead.
I don't want to speak for the vice president's administrative services, but I can say that they don't have all the final information. So part of it was making assumptions in the tentative budget on certain things. And so now that in about a week, we'll have some final information, they'll be including that in the adopted budget information that you're going to get. I expect that that will go down, but we will see what it really looks like.
So we really haven't, I think what I'm hearing is that we haven't really factored that into these calculations at this juncture.
Correct. And because the factoring will include decisions that need to be made per position, what we're going to do, how long we're going to keep them vacant, what are we going to, are we going to update the job description? Is the classification going to change, et cetera, et cetera? There's a lot of discussions that have to take place. And so we're making assumptions on that as well as paying out the one-time payment on, on each employee. So there's all those costs, as well as vacation payouts for a lot of the employees as well. So all that is included in it. And until we knew exactly what individuals were actually going to sign up, obviously, the vice president's administrative services couldn't do all those projections. So they'll get that information and they'll work really hard to include that in adopted budget, with still some assumptions, because some of those discussions will take some time.
No, no, but that's the input I was looking for, thank you.
Any, any further questions? Okay, so just to, your, your presentation has evoked a fountain of questions in my mind, CM. I really think that this is the heart of what we need to do as a district and as a board of trustees to really look at these, the fiscal issues you raised. And, and so just to follow up on Dave's question, the three things that struck at me is, on the personnel costs, you mentioned we need to look at reducing personnel costs. How do we do that? Reducing?
Yes, and I think the collective vision will prevail, not my vision. And because for that reason, we have opened the dialogue with the president. And that we. And that we did, and we wanted to make sure that we come together to see how are we going to do a better job of serving students with the existing staff, lesser staff, improved staff, or keep the same staff, bring more students, and get more FTEs? So we can do a better job of handling that down. So there's, it's two way to work. Either you reduce the cost or raise your awareness level and bring more students to your colleges. If I get 2,000 more FTEs in this district, I will be able to give that money back to the colleges, and by that way, I can reduce the cost as well. But everybody has to do more. Everybody has to do better. That's what it comes down to.
Right, well...
We are saying outright just reduce the staff. What we are saying is how we can make our staff, whoever they are, classified, administrator, faculty...
I understand that. So what I'm looking for, I, this, those are great things to say, we need to do better, we need to dig harder, we need to get stronger. I mean, that's, I agree with all that. But I mean, I think that the, the, you know, the chancellor and the presidents and the leadership and the unions need to take this seriously, because the last thing you want is, I know there's a desire not to have the board micromanage, but we do have a fiscal responsibility to, to the community and to the taxpayers. And focusing on, on fiscal prudence is not micromanagement. That's our job.
Yeah.
So, and I've had this discussion recently, because the term micromanage is thrown out, thrown out there a lot, and I think most, in, in some cases inaccurately, because this is our job. The expenditure of funds and the oversight of that, and doing that in a way that we are elected to do, is, that's why we're here. And that's why I'm asking these questions. So the two other things that I had were, are both colleges adding sections without increases in FTEs?
No, that is not the case. They did...
Well, you mentioned it in your presentation.
That's correct. One college did add a section and increase the FTEs. One college increased the section and lost the FTEs. I have a different kind of problem. The problem what we are facing is once we added a whole lot more FTE, section, did not got as much FTEs as what they deserve. You know? The numbers I have is basically, one college added 597 sections, and I only got 132 more FTEs.
Oh, wow.
I got less than a quarter FTEs, or one third of FTEs per section. Not acceptable. The other college here added 195 sections, and I lost 1,300 FTEs.
Oh, my goodness.
So I have a different, different dilemma working in the colleges. So we need to come together and say, how are we going to find a way to be remain productive at every, every, every level? Every division, every department has to be performed to the certain level. By that way, whenever we are adding a section, we need to make sure that we are making it more productive. There is a baseline of productivity available for section or FTEs of what goes up and down the street. So that's the, that's the question we are raising, working with the VP and the president, raising that awareness level, and I say, okay, next time you're going to add a section, what for senior colleges? Why are you, why are you not providing those? Because it is costing us.
Right.
And I'm adding every single section is costing you 4,500 to $5,000 for us to add that particular section. And that's where my 88% is a lot higher than where the normal cost of 85% cost. And I'm not saying everything is in academics. Across the board...
Well, let me ask a final question, is you mentioned we need to improve efficiencies to improve services and decrease costs. How do you recommend we do this?
We really need to look at what services we do provide, and who is the first, who are the staff who's providing the services? We really need to know exactly, every staff member, what services they contribute for the success for our students. Whether they are sitting in accounting office, whether they are sitting in admissions office, it doesn't matter where they are. They all have accountable point. We are, we have to look in our eye and say, am I contributing something for South Orange County Community College? That's all about. So we really need to change some of our psyche, working at South Orange County, that I'm contributing something. Then I come in the morning, I'm contributing something out there, and I need to feel good about it. So we really, really need to change that mindset of the people who are working. We have great people working in this mission. Don't get me wrong. We just need to find, come together.
I totally agree.
We do have, we do have a situation that we really need to work there. Nobody else is going to come and fix our situation. We have to fix it.
We don't want that to happen.
Yes.
I agree. Marcia, I'm going to get TJ, because you already had questions, so I'll get you next. Trustee Prendergast.
Yeah, I, I just kind of wanted to give an opportunity to the colleges to maybe give us some insight, based on the information that was just said. Not blaming or, or anything, I just, is it one of those kinds of things where you create the sections with the, if we build it, they will come mindset, and they just didn't show up? Or is it, there was a perceived demand, and then they, they changed their minds? I, I mean, I guess it's part of what he's alluding is that we need to really look at why we create sections and, and what we're offering. But I, I got to imagine, I mean, we've been around for a little while, 50-some years, we should probably have it figured out a little bit on how and why we add sections. So I'm just kind of giving you guys an opportunity to maybe educate us on how maybe that happened, if it's something that happens all the time, or this was an anomaly year, or, you know what I'm saying? I just kind of want to give you guys an opportunity to let us know what's going on with that.
Can I say something first, though? So we have, we're bringing back at our hour and a half to two-hour workshop for adopted budget, a lot of information on this. So I hate to put the college presidents and/or the vice presidents or anybody on the spot tonight to be able to explain something they, they're not prepared to do, when we can bring back data and show sort of the trends and sort of, under, help you understand and explain sort of what we've been doing and how it could sort of, where everything's at. So I just wanted to mention that, that that's part of the discussion for adopted budget, but if they want to add anything to that...
And I totally get that, but at the same time, this is a public forum...
Right.
On a presentation about, and they've been...
Sure.
Kind of called out here.
Yeah, we weren't, we weren't...
And I want to give an opportunity to maybe...
Intending to do that tonight, so that wasn't part of what we were trying to...
And that's fine. And if they want to save it for the budget meeting, they can. I just wanted to give them that opportunity.
Well, especially what you will tell them to prepare themselves when they come for the adopted budget. So they will be better prepared to answer your question, more informed, so they know what they are working on in future.
Okay, sorry, you, I, I, again, they're not new at this. It's not like the first time they've ever been asked, why did you create sections? And, and if it's too much on the spot, I apologize, but I don't understand why it would be difficult for them to just give us a, a cursory answer of some sort, just to say, yes, we'll take it up later and we'll explain it all, or, but they, like I said, they got called out, and I want to give them an opportunity to try and, you know, talk to it.
Well, I, I think a, a quick answer is that our Vice President for Instruction is our expert, and anything that you saw was, was planned. The outcomes were an anom, anomaly. I think that corrections are, at least in terms of IVC, corrections are well over halfway made at this point. Very easy to do, and will be corrected in a very short period of time. So I think the best thing is to be in a setting where we can really talk about the mechanics, which would take really quite a lot of time tonight to, to do that, so that it could be fully understood. But all of the VPs are, are superior at their work.
Sure.
I, I guess I have a personal insight on it, because I have a daughter who's doing, you know, taking a class in the summer. She's waitlisted, there's 25 spots in the class, she's waitlisted, waitlisted, she finally gets in the class, she shows up at the first day class, there's 18 people in it. Obviously, people change their minds. That's not their fault, that they set up a section and only 18 showed, when there was a demand that created a waitlist. They almost could have created another section, and had they done that, they would have had a section without the FTEs. So I just kind of want to let the board know that they're being called out for something. I'm trying to beat dead, you know, devil's advocate on them.
But you're talking about one anecdote, and, and maybe that's just, I mean, we don't, we just need more information from them.
Right.
In that anecdote, that may have been the case, but there may be other sections where that wasn't the reason why.
Right. And that's why I was kind of going to see if there was a way to find that out a little bit tonight, but I guess not.
So, well, just as one snapshot, just to add some information that we can talk about later. But in my career, I've been used to growth as high as 6%. That, that's the funded growth allocated by the state. So that's the cap that we can actually grow to and still be funded. 3% is probably a good reliable average. The state reworked its formula about two years ago. And so every college is now allocated a different growth percentage, and that was not true in all of my history here in this district. And as CM mentioned, it's currently 0.5%. I've never seen a number that low in my career. And in fact, the 0.5% standing by itself without any other aspects to it is not sustainable. So there's something to talk about there.
Okay. Did you want to say something, Kathy?
I'd just like to add that the changes that we've seen are things that we really couldn't have predicted. My biggest losses in FTEs were in the Social and Behavioral Sciences Division. Those are general education transfer courses, with the exception of one career education program, which is growing, has been. The demand that we've experienced in the past is not predictable based on the parameters that we've been using for years. There's just a lot of things going on, and I think a big part of it for us is traffic. We don't have people coming to take classes that are available, and some of the career fields that are not offered anywhere else because they can't get down here. Housing costs are too high for students to live nearby, so we're having younger families making an exodus from the area, although we're starting to look at some growth locally now with high-density housing. But it's all over the place. I mean, when we talk perfect storm, there are even additional factors that we're finding, that we're having struggles with.
Thank you. Trustee Milchiker.
Yeah, just a few things. I was going to say that what, what you were saying, that, that, you know, it's not micromanaging when we're talking about the budget. It's like trustees get fired if you overspend your budget, and budget managers get fired, budget managers and chancellors get fired if people over... So we really have to look at the bottom line and make sure that we're not overspending our budgets. It's very, very important. And, I mean, we deserve to get fired if we're spending more than we bring in, so, so we really have to be careful about this. I, I think we, we have to look at this. We have to look at, at our staffing, too. We have to look at the amount, number of administrators at both colleges and at the district, and make sure, if we have more administrators, what are they there for? Are they bringing in any additional students? Are they helping students? Or are they just there to add more administrators? I think it's really important to look at those, very important. And I, I do want to look at all the staffing for both colleges and the district very soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Witt.
Quickly, you said it quite well on page 18, but you only gave it a half a paragraph, and I think we should all be aware of this, that fiscal stability and reserve are economic uncertainties. We're in economic bliss right now. And what happens during that time? Less students come, less students, less adults come to, come to colleges. And we can't change that. I think we're going to have a turnaround, but that is difficult for a budget committee to handle.
Yes, you are absolutely right. But I think what we have is we have very talented people in the, in the district. We can, we do know through our internal scan and external scan and the labor market data, what is happening with our demographics? What will be happening in five years from now, 10 years from now? We already know where the whole work is going for the high school down the road in five years, something like that. So some predict, some things are predictable to the point where you can make the changes early enough so you don't get caught. So there's, there's, there's room for improvement. The one thing I would say for, on behalf of the Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College, when we have opened our dialogue, we have a tremendous amount of cooperation, not only from the president, from VP and the GND, for us to work together, because we all understand that we are all together in working, finding the solutions. This is not a problem for Saddleback, it's not a problem for IVC, this is not a problem for the community. So that I can assure you, that we are working together, finding the solution. Yeah, some solution may be a little bit harder for us to follow down the road, but again, we are not doing for any other purpose, but to provide the fiscal stability at the same time without compromising services to the student and their success. That's our goal. And as long as we can keep that internal, sometimes we have to make harder decisions. So we, we do make, but this is a more...
All right. Well, thank you, CM and Kim, and for everyone who's responded. Can we have a motion to approve the tentative budget? I see a motion from Trustee Prendergast and a second from Trustee Witt. I'm assuming we have no further discussion, so we'll go ahead and vote on the item. The tentative budget is approved by unanimous trustee vote, student trustee yes vote. Moving on to 6.2, academic calendar. So a motion to approve the item. Motion from Trustee Lang, second from Trustee Wright. Any discussion on the academic calendar? Let's go ahead and vote. Someone hasn't voted? Okay, that shouldn't be the problem. We have a six yes votes from trustees, one abstention, and a student advisory yes vote. On to 6.3, which is the program collaboration between Cal State Northridge and the South Orange County Community College District, and I believe we have a presentation.
So I'd like to introduce this item. I know the board recalls approving us to move forward on a letter of intent between the district and Cal State University Northridge. And for the last over a year now, both parties have been working very hard to make this happen. I can say that James Rondo and CM have been working very hard over the last few months, particularly, and we're pleased to be able to provide a presentation tonight to talk about what this collaboration agreement will entail and the benefits of it to Saddleback College and to KSBR. And I just want to make sure that we correct some language. I heard some folks saying it's a merger. It's not a merger. KSBR is still, will be an independent radio station, and they'll explain what that means in all this. So with that, CM and James?
Thank you. Good evening. I will let Jim Rondo, who is my partner in making this particular endeavor works for Saddleback College and South Orange County Community College District. This particular idea was being looked upon in 2015, and we are seeing the fruitful results of where we are here now embarking upon. And you do have the contracts. I'll let the gym go first, and I will come back shortly.
Good evening. As you heard, we were here in, in 2015 to ask for your permission to move forward with just exploring the idea of this partnership, and we hope to be back a little bit sooner than 2017. So here we are, and we've learned a tremendous amount along the way, so we think that that will make this even more prosperous and easier integration for, for the two stations. Just a little bit of background on the situation for those of you who are unfamiliar, if you don't recall, KSBR out of Saddleback College and KCSN out of Cal State Northridge both operate on 88.5 FM. And with just about 60 miles in between them, it's essentially like two radio stations are broadcasting on top of each other all the time. There's, you'll see some maps in just a moment. KSBR out of Mission Viejo, covers Mission Viejo real well, but as soon as you get on the outskirts, there are places where you can listen to KCSN really well, Irvine, which in any other situation would get, you know, part of our territory here. And the same thing, if you're driving by Griffith Park, where you would assume that KCSN out of, out of Northridge comes in fine, nope, you can hear the jazz out of Saddleback College quite often. So this is a situation that going back into the eighties and nineties, both stations have been frustrated by and wanted to, to fix. There really are no options to change frequencies, the FM dial is packed, so the only real solution is to share. And over the years, when I was here before, Terry Deville, my predecessor, has had these conversations and told me I had to go ahead to really explore it. We didn't really get into the, we didn't pretty details, but essentially, the idea is for both stations to collaboratively, collaboratively produce programming and synchronize signals in a way that we can do now that probably wouldn't have been able to do even, even 10 years ago as well, based on GPS signals and that kind of thing. So essentially, we wind up with one radio station operating with two separate antennas, one from Orange County, one from... one from Orange County, one from Northridge, and the listeners don't know the difference. The benefits of this, obviously, if you're in the radio business, you can't provide public service unless you have listeners who can hear you. So that's always been the frustration that we've had. Certainly, KSBR has some of the folks that listen to it and contribute to it, but the amount of service that we're able to provide just is very limited by the interference, because you can put the best programming on here, and people hear the crackle and pop, and they're gone, and a lot of them just never come back. So we believe that moving forward with partnerships such as this will allow us to reach more people, to provide a better service as a radio station. But there are a lot of auxiliary benefits to that. One of those is certainly a very robust and stable funding source that we will have as a result of more sponsorship, more contributions from listeners. We also believe that this partnership, by creating more audience, will allow us to dramatically increase the visibility and awareness not only of the radio station, but the district, for CSUN, the university. And that will have benefits in the attraction of students, both in person and online, attract staff to the district that have never heard of us before, all kinds of benefits from getting our name out there as part of this project. In terms of the program at Saddleback College, we'll have a lot more pathways for student opportunities. It's not no longer going to be, you want to be a DJ or a podcast caster. Being a part of this partnership and some of the efficiencies and additional fundraising that it will provide us will allow us to create a real infrastructure that you would have in a real broadcasting business, positions in sales and promotions and engineering and marketing, that sort of thing. So students who are maybe interested in broadcasting, they're not necessarily thinking they're going to be the next morning zoo, will have a way to get into the business, to experience it, and to be mentored by real professionals. We're going to show you the map in a moment that really makes this very dramatic. But just some background on the engineering. KCSN out of Northridge has what they call an interference-free coverage area that covers about 600,000 people. There are more people who can hear it who do get the crackle and pop, but that's about the number of people who can hear it without interference. KSBR has about 300,000 people that can hear it interference-free. Once all the engineering is done, the signals are synchronized, and the programming is matched between both of the stations, we estimate from the engineering studies, we'll go from under a million people reached to about 11.5 million. That is nearly complete coverage of the number-two market in the country, LA and Orange County. So as you can see there, the stations really are greater than the sum of their parts. So one of the reasons that we want to do this, in addition to some of the ones that I've mentioned already, is putting the radio station on a path to fiscal sustainability, which it's really not on right now. In terms of what it costs to run the radio station, probably $350,000 a year that the district is contributing about $300,000 of. A good year for fundraising at KSBR would be between $80,000 and $100,000. So you can see where there's a considerable gap there. That, we believe, is partly the engineering, is partly the reason, because we have interference, is partly because we have a format that has lost its luster in some ways. So we're going to show you here briefly how we're planning to fix this with your permission. So eventually, we believe that the radio station, operating as a partnership, can essentially be a profit center, that not only covers its own costs, but can grow into the future, just based on percentages. If we get eventually 5% of 11 and a half million people tuning in in a given week, even if 1% of those people decides to donate, that's, you know, that's $5,750 that we have on the books, and considerably more than we could possibly have in under the current situation. We also have built in for students and for all, not only Saddleback, but Irvine Valley College students, partnership agreement is a tier-one transfer priority partnership with California State University workers. So students from our district will also be able to join at Northridge and get tier-one transfer priority to CSUN for their four-year degree. And with so many institutions that impacted, that was an important factor. So let's move ahead to one of our dramatic slides. And you can see here, the areas in red on this slide, these are the areas that get the signal from one of the two radio stations, either from Mission Viejo or from Northridge. But those people also get a tremendous amount of interference. So there's a signal there, but they, it's really not all that usable. You can see the area right around our tower in Mission Viejo, where there's some green around KSBR. Then you drive a little bit north, you know, out of Mission Viejo essentially, and suddenly the work starts coming in back and forth. So you lose a lot of listeners that way. Moving ahead, though, after the engineering is completed, you can see the green, and that's good, and the yellow, and that's good. When the two signals are combined, essentially we have complete coverage of all of Southern California, from Los Angeles down through Orange County. So it's, as we said, a dramatic difference. You can see where all of those 11.5 million people are located that now receive service and hear the Saddleback College name, and we can do so much more for them than we ever have been able to do before. Some of the nuts and bolts of our business plan, and CM will get into some of the contractual details for us, but we've mentioned that revenue that will come, that revenue comes with a better fundraising base. We also believe with the combined operation, we'll be able to attract corporate underwriters, probably some greater promotions. We can bring concerts and events and that sort of thing to Orange County in addition to Northridge, probably as a partnership that we haven't ever been able to even consider before. We're considering a format that is similar to what is currently operating on the Northridge station, KCSN, with some modifications. In the broadcast industry, it's known as AAA, which stands for Adult Album Alternative. It's a very eclectic format. It's hard to describe, but it could be anything from Sting, to Tom Petty, and Cheryl Crowe, Connor Oberst. You might hear a little Dwight Yoakam in there, Howlin' Wolf from time to time. It's eclectic. One thing that you need to know about it is that it's not necessarily the top 40 hits that you hear from any of these artists. You probably wouldn't hear, you'd hear a stay album type, in other words. It appeals to people who are very passionate about music, and it works in public broadcasting, because those people also tend to be passionate about supporting the radio stations that support those artists. And in addition to the national artists that I've mentioned, we also have the opportunity to be very supportive of some local artists as well. That's, music discovery is a very key part of the format. So this is a, also, we should note, this is a direction that we've talked about going at KSBR in the past in terms of formatics, just because of the fundraising potential of it. And we believe because we're also talking about this dramatic engineering change that brings so many of the listeners to the radio station, that it's a good time to sort of leverage the momentum that KCSN already has in this format and give KSBR a jumpstart in moving the underbodies. Under the partnership, we will have programming air from both campuses. We have talent from Orange County operating out of Saddleback College. Some of the programming will be coming out of Cal State Northridge. There are inevitably questions, what happens to the current jazz format at KSBR? We are all very passionate about the current format, despite the fact that the audience and sometimes fundraising goals aren't completely met the way we'd like them to. So part of what we're going to be able to do here is work out a way to take the station as it currently exists, in its jazz incarnation, and move it to a digital format. Part of the engineering upgrade that has to happen here in order to be partners with Northridge is the introduction of some new gear that will also be capable of doing HD broadcasting. So we will, we contemplate moving the jazz format to HD2, so that people with high-definition radios in Orange County will continue to be able to hear it from KSBR. But it will also be expanded to Los Angeles and air on the HD3 channel of KCSN. So for the first time, Saddleback College jazz programming will also be available in Los Angeles, and that is, of course, in addition to the way that a lot of our listeners, because of the interference we have, already listen to it, that is streaming online and through a mobile device app that we're also working on. So just in closing, before we get to some of the contractual details here, we have had the opportunity in the last few months to work with a nationally-known consultant, public media company, did a lot of financial modeling for us and some formatic modeling. We have some numbers based on the formats of stations like WFEV in New York out of Ford University, and WSPN out of Philadelphia that runs similar formats. And conservative estimates tell us that in a market this size with a coverage of over 11 million people, by the fifth year of this project, we could, well, very relatively easily hit revenue growth potential of $5 million annual revenue year. So as you can see, that does put the radio station on a path to fiscal sustainability. It allows it to grow, it allows it to support its own business operations. Speaking of business operations, one of the things that we've been talking about quite a bit behind the scenes over the last few months is just how all of this would work between two institutions and two radio stations working together. CM has been instrumental, so we can talk about this, but CSUN will essentially, under this arrangement, be the fiscal agent. They would handle the accounting, the banking, the auditing services, and all that sort of thing, so we wouldn't have to take that on. The other CSUN entity called the University Corporation would also provide HR services, because we anticipate we will have in the future additional paid positions and that sort of thing, will need payroll services. So they would, they would take care of those things as this venture grows larger and larger. And as you provided, we also have a sample budget that we believe will allow us to grow prudently, not too fast, but be cognizant of the areas that we do need to grow early on and to generate revenue to make all of this, make all of this happen. So with that, CM, can you go over some of the additional major features of the agreement?
Thank you. And you can hear from his voice and excitement. Jim Rondo is very excited about the opportunities. From day one, it's been more than a six month that we are at it. We have three-day, all-day-long meeting with our consultants and CSUN folks. So we spend an enormous amount of time and energy to bringing this thing together. This is, this is where the major deal point is, basically, CSUN is going to provide a half a million dollar grant, not to pay back at all, as a part of our joint programming endeavor. They're also providing a $2 million line of credit for us to make sure that in the first two years, as they will be hiring more people for the underlying purpose and everything else, that they'll be, not revenue will be start flowing in the day one. So it will take a year two and year three before the new revenue will be start flowing. We don't have to pay it back until the year six through the 20th. So we make sure that we have enough seed money into the station for year three, four, and five, for us to be healthy, for us to do a better job of managing the station. Our responsibility as a part of the FCC is be still going to remain independent as 88.5 KSBR Saddleback College station. And it does require FCC does not want you to hand it over to somebody else. So we will be responsible for it. It is well spelled out in our agreement that three FCC attorney have looked at it, ours, theirs, and consultants. So we make sure that FCC attorney have provided their blessing to make sure we are moving forward. Our responsibility for the Saddleback College, that the general manager salary will be paid from our college. Their general manager will be paid from their organization. So all the joint operations will be paid from the joint operational revenue and expenses going forward. We will have the radio oversight committee, and one person from each campus, and there will be one community member that will be sitting on them from then to, from time to time. For the first year, they may have to meet every single month in order to make sure that everything is going in the right direction. ROC will approve the annual budget, the collaboration amount execution as well. The other part of the deal point is, we will be responsible for all equipment, our antenna and everything else. They will be responsible for their, as a part of the FCC, they can just say, everybody pay for it. But at the same time, we have a leave aid. If we would like to make sure those expenses be paid out of the joint program, we can do that. We have a leave aid over. CSUN will enroll up 150 students from South Orange County Community College.
Oh, okay.
It will help our White Valley College as well as Saddleback College for them to go to CSUN as a guarantee. Initially, the 20-year term, we wanted to make sure the first five years we had been healthy enough, and from year six to the 20th, and we return that, that $2 million, basically we have enough time for us to take back. And joint programming will commence on August 1st, because it will take an enormous amount of time and energy for us to order more equipment, with the mapping and everything else. Overall, the more signal will be announced sometime in September. Everybody from October 1st onward will be hearing up and down to LA, Orange County, all the way to Northridge, same station, basically. That's where the deal point is. If I can answer you any questions.
Thank you for your presentation. This is a big deal, obviously. Trustee Milchek.
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. It's very exciting. I just have some questions as to details. Number one, where will these programs be broadcast from? Will they be broadcast from Saddleback College or from Cal State Northridge? That's number one. Number two, when will this be done? When will the joint project be done, and when will the broadcasting start? And will they, will they say, this is a broadcast from KSBR, Saddleback College, and CSUN, Cal State Northridge? You know, at the same time, they'll, they'll give a little bit of publicity to both organizations at the same time, which is great, over that wide area? And those are my, those are my main questions right now. Thank you.
I'll let Jim, because Jim is the person responsible for getting it more.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, well, actually, in terms of the joint branding, when the station does its legal ID at the beginning of every hour, both institutions will be mentioned with each set of caller. So that'll be an hourly thing. And in addition to that, each institution will also have a series of probably 30-second announcements that we can schedule, just as if they're regular commercial or underwriting announcements, that will, you know, they may decide to run them ahead of you during a period where enrollment, registration is happening, or there's a special event, or...
Yeah.
It will really be up to each college what kind of messages they want to get out, but each college will have some messages that they will run, and they will be heard in the entire area each time. In addition to that, in the visuals, each caller will also be mentioned, you know, associated logos and that sort of thing. In terms of when we are going to start this, it really depends on how quickly the engineering can happen. Once the equipment arrives, it's really not all that difficult to install it and get it synced up, but it is going to take probably a couple of months. As CM said, we're anticipating August, mid-August is probably optimistic. We would love if that, if that happened, if we were to, you know, get the Poodle to move forward. We do have at Saddleback College studios that are being prepared for this purpose, for the radio station in general, but they're certainly high-tech and ready to go for broadcasting to all of Southern California. So the idea would be that each station would essentially select the talent that would broadcast in which market. Initially, probably the morning show would come from Northridge, the day show would come from Orange County, afternoons would come from Northridge, we'd be back on in the evening. And then going forward, because it's going to be programmed like one singular station, if we were to have a talent that we thought fit a certain date part down here, we would just, you know, work it out with the programming departments to have it happen here. So that isn't so much set in stone, except that the idea is that each market is going to be equally represented in terms of the broadcasts that go over the air, and the people listening in San Fernando Valley might hear us talk about being in Orange County, but other than that, there's not gonna be much difference.
Okay. And, and will they be able to get this channel online as well, like on, on the internet?
Yes.
Okay, great.
The station will also stream, and it will also have an app. And the, the idea is also to be very promotionally active. For example, bringing artists to town for concerts and possibly doing one show in the valley or somewhere north of here, and then another show in Orange County, which not only is, is good to, and good promotionally for the artists that we support, it's also good for revenue.
Yeah, excellent. Okay, thank you.
And the very important point that I did not put it in our presentation, I just want you to know that as in when the time permits, there will be a revenue in excess of the expenses. Both institutions will share those revenues fifty-fifty.
Great.
So it's not like, because they're big, they get more or anything. We both are equal partners, so those revenue will flow back to the college down the road.
We may, we may need the money, you know? Okay.
You'll be looking for the way to make money.
Trustee Lang.
Yes, thank you. So obviously, probably the most important, or one of the most important things, I think, was finding that you're, there would be a good cultural fit, and that you would be able to continue to appeal to the existing audience that you managed to develop down here. They will continue to do that as well, that it seems like both sides can work well together in terms of working out the schedules and all of those kinds of arrangements. So, you know, I get that part of it, and I think that's, that's huge in terms of moving this thing forward. I was obviously curious about the finances associated with all of this. All of the numbers that we saw here... All of the numbers that we saw here were really current budget and forward looking numbers. I couldn't really tell from an historic standpoint, you know, what's happened in the past in terms of how much Northridge has had to underwrite their station versus the contribution that Saddleback has been making, you know, towards the KSBR operations here. I did note that the initial funding needed to cover any deficits was going to come from, from them, from, from Northridge. Curious about that. I, you know, more, more than anything else, whether that was just a great negotiations on your part or what the thinking was behind that a little bit. And, well, I, I guess as a start, maybe you could address some of that.
We kind of worked for back and forth in terms of, we did ask our consultant to kind of say, this is what our budget and our expense and our revenue is. They did the same thing. They provided to them. Then the consultant went to the open market and see what are the comparative stations that we will see that they may have to spend moving forward. They know that they are spending more money right now than what they are spending in for our station. For that purpose, they know that after the year two, it will be more even some gain. So they're putting half a million dollars, whatever there is, as a grant rather than putting a loan. So we say, hey, wait a minute. We are equal partner. We are not going to put any new money, but we are willing to take on what additional expenses that you incur. But whatever you were incurring in the past, you need to put some money up front. And that's where the half a million dollar number came from about, because we both knew about actual budget, so that's how we do it. The $2 million, we wanted to make sure that we are going to be able to reap the benefits of it as the revenue will be progressing from year three, four, and five. We will be fifty-fifty equal partner, because there will be a benefit after we pay off the $2 million.
Payback on the credit first.
The loan, the credit. So we wanted to make sure that we are responsible for it, for that part. We didn't have to put the money in. But we wanted to make sure that any residual value comes after the year six, 50% goes out of the line of credit, 50% returns back to the partners. So then the immediate return of the dollar is coming back.
I wanted to work.
That's how we actually do this. But again, those things can be changed as a mutual partner, sitting apart from each other, through the ROC, the ROC committee, and they, they can bring it forward.
Okay.
Those were the initial talks.
Okay. And the, again, this is a true partnership, that there will be essentially equal input on both sides in terms of the, the management of these, of the operations. Okay.
Spend more time about the format, what kind of format we wanted to go and how we would get an agreement and all this. I'm new to this, but I have worked through the Q C side, you a little bit. I said, okay, you come along and let's find a way to work together because this is what we're moving from a 11 million people to 11 million people. This may be the largest joint in United States, probably as a public radio. There is no size of 11 million people out there who are joining as a public radio.
I think you also had mentioned the kind of student or Saddleback student participation that you might be looking at in the future. What kind of student participation has there been in the past on both sides of the equation?
Not much. I would say that very minimal. What we wanted to encourage our students at both institutions, IVC as well as Saddleback College, you have an opportunity to go there. They have a variety of the major, Cal State Northridge and their different. So we wanted to see how we can help our students to get into the class for year one.
Well, and have, has Northridge traditionally had a lot more students involved with their programming up there?
In terms of, in terms of programming, KSBR, nearly everyone who's on the air at KSBR now actually has been a student in the CTBR program at Saddleback College over the years because of the capability, the rules and that sort of thing, many of them are not correct students. But that's, that's really one of the entryways. What, what's really unique about this is building a business infrastructure allows us to be more than just a radio station. We have, you know, we have on-ramps for students that want to be performers. If they want to be sportscasters, if they want to mentor Don Camber, our news director is here, they can work with Don Camber. A lot of, a lot of students do that. For the on-air component, we have it covered. We also have a student rock station, OC Rock Radio, that allows them to, when they get their feed wet, and that's part of the coursework as well. What this allows us to do is have an infrastructure where they can work with the sales department. Right now, we don't have a sales department. We don't have a promotions director. It's a largely, mostly volunteer operation. So what we're talking about is professionalizing it, so it's more than just a college radio station. It's really a professional operation that they can be part of. So they might come in as a DJ on the rock station and end up working with the promotions director or going out on a sales call eventually. And those are opportunities we can't provide now. Northridge was in a similar position about a number of years ago, five or six years ago, if there was a classical station. They're about five, six years ahead of us in terms of format change here. But they also do something similar to what we're going to do with the HD channel. They provide, you know, a student, sort of student radio station up there for students to get their feed wet essentially and find out if they're really interested in broadcasting. But they're, you know, probably five years into building the promotions department, leadership department, that kind of thing, that we're, you know, going to be joining and hoping to take advantage of there. Not that far ahead of us, but there are some student opportunities there and also certainly at the Northridge Journalism Department, that also works alongside the radio station that, that we have not been able to offer for our students in the past. So we hope that we can take advantage of that.
Great, thanks, guys.
Jim and CM, I know that how much work you put in this. This is a huge, huge undertaking. I think we were here a couple of years ago when, I think I heard it's going to be done in six months. I knew there was, there's no, no way possible. So I have, in the interest of time, looking at the clock, just summarize again the programming, the vision. I thought you said you had, that CSUN is the morning, Saddleback is the noon time, CSUN is the evening, and so.
The listener will not know where this.
No, no, I, I'm not talking about the listener. I'm talking about program content. Creation of program content, delivering program content.
We, we go into this knowing that we're essentially, we're building a brand here. So what we're trying to do is build a unified brand with two signals that represents two institutions well. So we will have one programming department that we will, you know, certainly contribute to.
So hold on. So is this, is this safe to say the programming is, content is going to change?
The programming content on the station as it is now, yes.
Yeah, okay.
And that, that's something that we would be contemplating even if we were not doing this partnership.
Okay.
Just based on the revenue potential and keeping the station sustainable. So, so yes, that will change. We will have one person who's designated as the programming director who makes decisions about what talent belongs on the air. Certainly in this situation, it's, it's understood that some talent will be in Orange County, some talent will be in Northridge. That's not available. But it will be that person's job to select those people, to train those people, to work with them in terms of their on-air performance. And, and so that, the idea though is to have the radio station operate as if it's a radio station with one antenna and one office operating from two different places. And, and you mentioned the culture. That was very important when we explored this. Do we really want to do this? Can we make this work? And we found working with Northridge that the culture was there to be, you know, very, very amenable to the things that we needed here. And, and I think we feel the same way about, about them, institutional messages and that sort of thing. So I think we feel very, very good about that. But in terms of what the programming is going to be, yes, it will be changed in terms of the playlist, it will be changed in terms of the presentation. Jazz format will move to the digital channel and the microwave format will take over the analog frequencies.
And then in terms of the, the bolstering of the organization to make it more professional, my read was that you're kind of modeling like a nonprofit organization in terms of development staff, I think you mentioned. Is the $2 million line of credit going to go towards hiring staff?
Yes.
The student being all of the, we're going to hire any more staff, professional staff for year one and two.
And, okay.
And happen again to all of the dependents because that's the best.
Okay. Looking at the clock.
Make a motion to extend the meeting for a half hour tonight.
Yes.
Second.
There's a motion from. Yeah, all right. So do, do we have any further questions on this item? The TSBR?
Uh, teacher has a question.
My request to speak was for after the vote to make a motion to extend the meeting.
Okay, so we have, all right. Gentlemen, thank you for your presentation, your ambitions, and for moving it forward in a positive manner. Okay, we have a motion from Trustee Milchker and a second from Trustee Lang. Approve 6.3. Let's go ahead and vote on the item. We have unanimous trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. And then we have a motion to extend the meeting to 9:30 PM from Trustee, well, I'll see who's, who's on here. Well, I think you've got to make the. So a motion from, from Trustee Lang. And a second from Trustee Witt. Let's go ahead and vote. The meeting is extended to 9:30 PM by unanimous trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. And we'll let Trustee Wright, who braved out a very long meeting tonight. Thank you. Let him go.
Very good.
Thank, thank you, Trustee Wright. Okay. Okay, we're now on to 6.4, the Saddleback College Baseball Field Bleacher Replacement Project. I've spent a lot of time on those bleachers. I'm glad to see this here. Is there a motion to approve the item? There is. Motion from Trustee Lang and a second from Trustee Jay. Any questions on this item? Okay, let's go ahead and vote. It is a unanimous trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote when, when trustee absent. Okay. Item 6.5, the Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College Bookstore Operations Services Agreement. Is there a motion to approve the item? Trustee Milchker moves the item. Is there a second? Second from Trustee Lang. Any questions or discussion?
You had one.
No, that was, that was from two items ago. Let me remove it.
I think, I think Deborah answered that question you had online.
Trustee Lang.
Yes. Well, I'll just bring it up. It, it was an item that I brought up, but I think it's worthy of at least a little bit of a discussion that we, there are some inconsistencies in the vendor contracts, some of which were on the consent calendar tonight, others of which were included on the other items in which the contracts provide for contributions, donations for scholarships, and some are just suggestions. And I think some uniformity in that area is probably called for.
Okay. Any other questions? I can't remove my speaker request. I'm not sure why, but ignore it. Okay, let's go ahead and vote on the item.
It's not on here.
There it is. The motion carries by a six to zero trustee vote and a student advisory yes vote. Okay, 6.6, Modular Wall Systems Agreement with DIRTT Environmental Solutions. Is there a motion to approve the item? There's a motion from Trustee Milchker. Do we have a second? Second from Trustee Prendergast. Any discussion? Okay, let's go ahead and vote. The motion approves with the unanimous trustee yes vote and student advisory yes vote. 6.7, it is the Purchase, Lease, Relocation, Dismantling, Removal of Division of the State Architect, Approve Portable Buildings. Motion from Trustee Lang to move the item. And do we have a second? Second from Trustee Prendergast. Discussion. Let's go ahead and vote. We have unanimous trustee yes vote and student advisory yes vote. 6.8, Saddleback College Vocational Cosmetology, Cosmetology, Cosmetician Education Services Agreement. Motion from Trustee Lang to move the item. Second from Trustee Jay. Any questions? Okay, let's go ahead and vote. Motion carries by a six to zero trustee vote and a student advisory. I don't see a vote. Yes vote. All right. 6.9, Saddleback College Cafeteria and Catering Services Agreement, SMB Foods.
Is, is, can I ask one question?
On this item?
Yeah.
Well, let's get a, we have a motion from Trustee Witt, second from Trustee Jay, and a question from Trustee Milchker.
I just wondered if it's the same vendor that we've used for the cafeteria? Okay, great. I think they've done a great job. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Seeing none, let's go ahead and vote. We have a six to zero trustee vote and a student advisory yes vote. Motion carries. 6.10, Copier Equipment and Related Devices, Xerox Corporation. Motion from Trustee Lang and a second from Trustee Jay to move the item. Are there any questions? Let's go ahead and vote. Still need a unanimous trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. 6.11, Saddleback College ATAS Renovation Project, Explore Option 3. Is there a motion to approve the item? Ah, we're going to have a presentation.
So do we? So I'd like to introduce several people who are going to outline the advanced technology renovation project, the options that they explored, and their recommendation. So we have tonight Dean Tony Tang, Vice President of Instruction Kathy Worley, and CM Brombot. I think that's it for tonight, right? Okay.
It's the CM show tonight.
Yeah. Yeah.
Good evening, board members, councilor of constituents. Thank you for an opportunity to speak about the, the project that we've been working on for some time now. Just a reminder that prior to the spring 2016 semester, the ATAS division moved out of the task building that we have next door here, and we moved into swing space. And we've been diligently trying to work on finding a, a good, sustainable home for the division. And so to the point, we're last November, district staff met with the ATAS faculty and staff to discuss the possibility of a new building. The faculty agreed on the recommendation to pause the renovation of the task building to really look at the opportunities and possible other solutions to, for helping the, of the division grow. The board approved this in December at the board meeting. And then from January through April of this year, we evaluated various different building configurations. And on May 18th, we presented a recommendation of a new building with projected growth recommenda, uh, projected growth addressed to faculty and, and staff. And the faculty unanimously agreed that this was a good idea. However, there were some questions, so that last week, we met with faculty and staff again to make sure that they were comfortable with the options. And they, once again, were wholeheartedly behind it. In this presentation, we're looking to provide you with a quick project history and, and a synopsis of the analysis that led to the recommendation between the three considered options. In front of you is a drawing of the task building and the topology. If you take a look on the, just to give you a little orientation, if you look at the building on the right side, that's the north part of the building. And the, the building that's on the left is the south building, is the two wings of the task building. The genesis of the task building renovation project, however, was what they call an uneven foundation settlement. In other words, unstable ground. A problem first noticed when the doors of the building were getting hard to open. And then we found that there was excessive cracking within the stucco of the building. So if you take a look at. So if you take a look at the next pictures, you can see some of the cracks. A geotechnical study determined underlying fill range from four feet on the north wing to 10 feet fill on the south wing. Through the north wing was, though the north wing was determined to be compromised, the south wing originally was plus the OK. However, after further study, we found that the south wing also had compromised as well. The, this, the problem with this, it doubled the budget of repair from $10 million to So we went ahead and started moving on the remodel, and what we did is we had construction documents submitted to DSA, and the swing space occupied by the ATAS division. The mechanical, electrical, and plumbing engineering firm that we used went out of business, and rather unexpectedly, and it became necessary to find an alternative firm who would be able to review, accept, and if necessary revise for the portion of the design. Concurrently with this, CM brought a fresh perspective to the district and recommended the project paused to allow contemplation of whether a new building or renovation would be better served the district. So what I'd like to do is introduce Kathy, Kathy Worley, who talked about the programs.
We currently have programs for the house outside of ATAS. Automotive Technology moved into a space that was ultimately intended to be maintenance and operations transportation space. They petitioned to stay there because it turned out it was larger and more, more effective for instruction than the space that they would have gone back to once ADA compliance was worked into the plan, which allowed them less space. Interior design and fashion are both housed in BGS, so they were never slated to be in ATAS at this point. Culinary arts and hospitality had already been in a village, which is on lower campus, and they do not have a place in the building as task was to be renovated, or in the new building as is being proposed. What we're looking at doing with these programs is, well, culinary arts currently is slated to go into the student services renovation when that happens. That's probably at least seven years out, given that we need to build the gateway building to move those folks out and then renovate the student center. So what we're looking at now is entering into the next education facilities master plan, where if these, this proposal is worked out, we'll go forward with building a structure and then figure out what we're going to do and need as a college for additional programmatic type of growth. Advanced Manufacturing, formerly known as Rapid Tech, moved off campus and suffered essentially decimation of the program. They're back on campus now, and I think the thing that's holding them back now, despite an excellent labor market need and demand, is the facility that they're in. So we're looking for a larger, more appropriate space for them to be in. They're slated now to go into the ATAS renovation. It would be still a very small space and probably not very convenient for what they need. They have to be on the first floor. So with that, CM is going to describe the process that was used to arrive at a recommendation for this project. Thank you.
I think the biggest challenge that we were facing when we were looking at all these different options was because we were in the ATAS building, they went to the portable building, and now we're trying to create a new program of the building. So they really wanted to make sure that we are not missing anything, because they, they have been in the building all of the year and a half ago. Now they're so used to with the new portable building, it is not suitable, so they try to make sure that we, we do the calculation right. So we did look at what exactly is happening with the ATAS division, except those, those programs which are not coming into the new program. We did look at how many sections they offer by each program. We also looked at what kind of leadership and contact effort that they generate for that particular department. We also looked at the growth factor, that we really don't want to have A for A. We wanted to make sure for next 15 years, we do have growth built into that building that all of a sudden they're not going to come back in one year and say, there's not enough building. So we did provide them half percent growth for the first five years, and hoping it will do better for the 10, 1% for next 10 years, provided them a good 1/2 percent growth for each department as well. We also were looking for a flexible space. As you already know, the CTE programs are not here to stay forever.
No, they're not.
Five and 15 years, things do change, and they really need to think about how we can find a way on the first and ground floor, more flexible space so equipment can change as well. We also are looking at, right now, our soil is not something that is a more efficient soil in the world. We have a problem with ATAS building for the reasons, and wanted to make sure that we go into a flat ground, so we can do a better job observing the students in a more flat ground rather than in the middle ground. So those are all the various components that we do look at. We make sure that they have enough space for each program where they used to be in the ATAS building. We look at the growth on top of it. We make sure that each department is comfortable with the space we provide. But you also assure them that this is just a free program. You have to see it with a criteria architect, department by department, and make sure what your requirements are for each lab and how you want it to go layout. This will be the architect's responsibility to bring the entire division together and make sure they synchronize all the department working and. So sometimes they wanted to know that now, and it's impossible for them to see that as a schematic and programming piece at this stage juncture. So this is a number that we have provided. The alternative that we have looked at it is basically what they have right now as existing building is about $36,600 gross square footage. We have pretty close to about $20 million that's set aside, but even if we decided to do the remodeling of that particular building, our overall cost will be pretty close to $25 million, with escalation costs and everything else on top of it. If we just have to replicate existing program in the new building, it will probably cost $36 million, because now we are talking about infrastructure costs, demolishing of the old building, all those costs will be associated with it. But that will still not solve the problem for them in terms of what is the future growth into each program. So the numbers came out to be about $11,45,000 gross square footage for a building for all this particular program. The cost factor for building alone is $10 million more, but overall cost is about $47 million. This is all inclusive cost, including furniture, including demolishing the old building. All those costs are inclusive. So this is more on, closer to the reality part of it, and this is what we are recommending for productive work forward. If we are able to do this, and if we don't lose any time from this point onward, we know that by January of '21, they should be able to bring the new building within three and a half years for them to have the ATAS building. As Kathy have mentioned, as the district will embark upon the educational and facility master plan, they will be looking at the alternative to the remainder of the CTE program to see how they can be within the proximity of each other as a secondary program. But right now, they're going to stay where they are. So new educational and facilities master plan will help the college and the district how they would like to embark upon the new building in the future as well. So we are not saying we don't want all this program coming over to the CTE, but right now, with budgetary constraint, we want to make sure that we should provide the new building for this program going forward. I also wanted to acknowledge Brandy Delena, sitting right over here. She was with us from day one, I just want you to know, but she felt like that she really needed to stay in the audience and let us do the talking today to make sure that we can answer any question, not from facilities perspective from her end, but from the programming perspective, and how does it impact the division, how does it impact the EPI, and what are the requirements that the division has? If that, you have the option.
Well, thank you for that presentation. We do have a number of questions, and we'll start out with trustee Witt.
Yes, I'm just going to get to this page. I had two questions, and the first one was for Tony, if, when you said that the faculty wholeheartedly was behind it?
Yes. In the two meetings that we held, the one in May and also the last one last week, we polled the faculty that were in attendance, and there were no dissension. Everyone did agree upon it, especially after we answered their questions and the concern they had.
Okay, you said last week, so we were in only summer school, how many faculty were there?
There were probably, all the department chairs were there, which substantially, most of the, and a lot of the full-time faculty were there last week.
Okay. The second question is what we just went through. You're looking at 22 million more for a total of, what, four, eight, maybe 8,000 square Am I wrong?
No, I'm seeing 10,700.
Basically, what was $36,000.
Three, six to forty-two, forty-four.
But this is the, with the new infrastructure needed over a dead building, this does improve the demolition cost.
Oh, this is the square feet right there.
Okay.
We really need to make sure that we are able to manage. We really didn't want to give you any numbers that kind of surprise you down the road once you started the project. So you already know, so our job is to make sure that we can stay within that guideline and find a way to below $47 million, that's what we are though. But we wanted to make sure that we are forthright about what it could be a potential cost for this.
Yeah. Well, CM, you can appreciate, I want what's, what's good for the students and what faculty are supporting. It just seems like a lot of money, 22 million for 8,000 more square feet, but demolition, I didn't put that into the, the factor. And I also am looking at, when you say you're going to renovate the old building, having lived in San Clemente for quite a while, I understand the meaning of competent bedrock. So you just never know.
You do have a property intent company, and I can do it.
Yes, all right, thank you.
Boy, you're everywhere, CM. Trustee Lang.
Yeah, so, so a couple of different questions. I guess I first needed to understand exactly what the options entailed here, and does the existing building option mean that we would somehow cure the, the bedrock problems that we've got, and then, you know, rehabilitate the, the building, if you will, versus obviously I know what a new building means, and then it's a function of the square footage, and then I also don't understand from a programmatic standpoint what the vision is for the third option that, you know, you're recommending to us.
So if I go back to the first, the existing building, the first and foremost is it does not provide you any for the girls and all for the teachers, right up to that, so there's no space for the girls. The way the building is constructed in 1990, it does not have as much flexible space for the program changes. So all of a sudden, you will be looking at, you're strictly the building as is, and you may not be able to bring a lot more additional. Suppose you want to have HEAC programs come into that sort of program. You're looking at a lot more changes for the building itself, so you'll be spending the money at that time, and you're still not serving it well.
Right. Well, my other question is going to be, have we also envisioned any sort of a role for Career Tech at ATAP, for example?
I'm sorry, I'm not following that part. Are we talking about the ATAP as a possibility kind of?
Yes, for some of these programs.
We have not looked at it, and, and from the programming perspective, as a Saddleback College, and if I'm speaking out of turn, please stop me, they like to keep the CTE program right here.
Right, which...
The, the one, the biggest draw for us, for students, I think Saddleback is, has more challenges to bring the student on the campus. So removing any program off the campus will be more detrimental. But we wanted to make sure that we keep it and we improve in such a way that we can attract more students. That, that's our objective forward. And bringing the new building, yeah, it does a lot more good for the students, because all these buildings, there were in the 60s, 70s, and 80s and 90s, not as many students attended. Now we are looking at as a stopping point for the students to converge and have a social gathering coming on the campus. They use the campus as their gathering place, not just education only. So we wanted to make sure that every opportunity that we receive, take it. Part of your more money, but you still have to take that opportunity and look forward.
Sure, not a little more money. Okay, but, but I'm, I'm still interested in the vision for the, the new building.
Sure.
From a programming standpoint.
The vision for the new building is basically, three things that I can assure you is flexible space, provide for the girls, and also on the platform ground, it is better for the teacher for that particular program. So those are the three benefits that we can see. Not only that, everything to do with the technology and how we will have the mo, how you provide the instruction in the classroom, it will be far superior in working out. That, because you will have the new building, you will have the new technology, that's where you are going forward. I can't do that in older building, I can't imagine that I'd like to do it, but I just can't do it. And that did currently come wrong?
I just want to add something, did you get a line?
Yeah, you, you still haven't convinced me that I should support this yet.
Let me add one more perspective then. With the existing building that's sitting on hillside that has silt that hasn't presented itself well over the years, two years after that building was opened, we were having problems. So imagine now underneath that building, we have all kinds of connections to that building. We have sewer, we have water, electrical data, all that's coming in, and it's sliding. So we can take care of some of that right now, it's moving, I shouldn't say it's sliding, it's moving, because it isn't sliding, it's moving. We can take care of that now, when, what, one of the things that you asked is, what could we do to improve that building? The plan was to completely demolish the slab, go in and deepen up the foundation, and then so doing then, the entirety of the interior would need to be renovated, all of the systems would be renovated. So that's what we're having with that building. But when we test the soil on a building like this, we do one boring, and that boring is, you know, it's about that big, and we don't do one, we do six of them. But that doesn't tell us every, every bit of the story. One of the concerns that we're having, CM mentioned, we're having, or I think it was Tony mentioned, we're having differential settlement on this building. So one side of the building is heaving differently than the other side of the building, and when we get up to the second floor, we'd see a greater heaving going on there, which tells us that we don't have a good story about the soil. We can make improvements, but there would be no guarantee at the end of the day that we would be making the right improvements. Our best junior guess, yes. Do you think it would provide us with a solution for now? Yes. Do you think it's the best investment of money? No.
I get that, I get that part, but you, you feel that you could fix the soil's problem by demolishing the building and redoing the, what, the slab or what, I mean, I'm not exactly...
We would demolish the building, we would demolish only the slab.
Hold on, hold on, trustee Milchekar, hold on. So just, can you suspend for a second? We're going to need to extend this meeting. So can we, we don't have a motion on the table, so can we put forward a motion to extend the meeting, and we'll come back to this discussion, because it is important? Well, can someone make a motion?
Yes, I'll make a motion that we extend the meeting till 10 o'clock.
I'll, I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion from trustee Lang, and a second from trustee Milchekar to extend the meeting until 10 PM.
There we go.
Okay, well, we probably should have, but let, let's go ahead and vote. I think we're missing somebody. Not sure who. Trustee Jay. I need you to vote. Thank you. Motion carries... Motion carries six to zero, student trustee consent. We are here till 10:00 at least. Well, hold on, well, a second.
Just to clarify.
Will you yield the floor to the chancellor?
Absolutely.
Okay, Chancellor, Vince Simmons.
I just want to make sure we're clarifying. When they're saying demo the building, they mean then they're going to build it in a different location. I'm not sure if that was clear.
I was going to say, I was going to say that, because I don't think he got that.
I don't know if you mentioned that. Could you, could you talk a little bit about that, please?
He did mention that, but kind of in passing. It was hard to, hard to hear.
Sorry, what, that one, there.
Yeah, when we're talking about demoing the building and looking for another location, we want to find a prime location somewhere on the Saddleback campus that can take advantage of hopefully better soil conditions, on flat ground preferably. The reason why for flat ground, if you look at the ATAS programs, when we take deliveries of large equipment or large supplies, a lot easier for a big truck to come up to the building rather than doing it on a hillside. And I did want to add one other thing programmatically. In the old task building, we were already running out of space when we moved out of there. There wasn't enough offices for faculty, there wasn't enough classroom space being used. It was, if we moved back, we're moving back into a smaller space, and it would just would have hurt a lot of programs because of that.
Got it, okay. That helped enormously.
I have a que, I said request to speak, but I think TJ said.
Well, the names have been, we need to put back the discussion item back up so I can see who's requested to speak, but I believe, Trustee Prendergast, did you have questions?
He was first and I was second.
Yeah, we still need the other item back.
But that's okay, go ahead.
You kind of answered one of them because I hadn't seen anywhere discussion about where you were going to move the new one to, so I'm assuming you don't know that yet, but you know you need to move it because I think that helps ease, ease the mind. But I still think I want to hear a little bit, maybe kind of, you know, extrapolate on Trustee Lang's question about what's going to be maybe moving in there in the sense, you talked about automotive has moved and they like where they're at. So now you've got whatever square footage they used to have not needed in a new building, so then why do we need to necessarily make it bigger if we gain that space? I just, I think it, to go more to a detail of what he's trying to get to is, would help me as well, is why do you need more space if you've moved three programs out of the old space and you may have a hard time finding a space to build it on campus to make it bigger? So I think what we need to hear is that there's been a, an examination, research as to why you need 8,000 more square feet when you've moved three programs out of it.
That was trying to get at.
Well, that's a good question, actually.
What has happened with the ATAS program is one, where they were, they did not have enough space for sharply, and they went to the portable building, they did occupy a lot bigger than what they used to have in ATEP, so that's number one. Number two, they did not have enough spaces for the faculty offices or a meeting room or a common lab where they can teach all their programs in their complex. They didn't have it. Not only that, on top of it, they did not have a prospective growth for the next 15 years at all. So we are giving them the prospective growth for the next 15 years for each program. The fourth one is we are also providing them the tool lab for advanced manufacturing, which they never had in the building in the first place. So we are bringing them also in the past. So these are all, every little bit thing adds up, you know, 2,700 square feet for advanced manufacturing adds up. We have the more offices, well, 2,000 feet adds up. We are also providing the growth for architecture in program, that adds up another 1500. So little by little, it adds lots more space that they need, and they will feel a lot more comfortable than doing it open. Eventually, the building will have some more getting students, because the growth is always going to be there. By the time you build the building, you already behind the curve for three and a half or four years. Because that growth is already going to happen.
Yeah, and I get that, and, but I, we weren't hearing that. And, and, and.
No, the rest.
Part of that, though, is what I really want to make sure that we're clear on.
Okay.
All right, can I go?
Great, okay, thank you.
Yeah, okay. No, I've lost my train of thought.
Sorry.
The idea of, you said 2021, okay, we already know that they're in these portables that, you know, the architecture students are complaining that their stuff is bouncing when people walk. What are we doing to mitigate some of those concerns that we heard until 2021 when this can all get done?
Sure. And we have started working with that when we met with our faculty first time in November 2016. We heard, we made the action plan, and I let Tony explain what we are working with some of the portables which are not working for them, how we move those programs temporarily to the science engineering and that's where we need to make it. I'll let the Tony speak.
Sure, you asked a question about architecture and that part of the complaint was the bouncing floors and also the condition of the portables as a whole. So what we did is we're exchanging space of the portables and we're going to deactivate those portables and we're exchanging it for space in the math science building. And what we're doing is we're working with faculty to make sure that that space is designed out for the architecture program.
Great.
So we are, and, and, well, we know the pros and cons of the math science building, the floors are concrete floors, and so they're solid, so they won't bounce.
Good.
Which is one of the major problems with the architecture program, is complaining about.
Thank you.
Okay, Trustee Milchekr.
Well, I think one of the things you, I understood you were saying is that if you demolish the building, do you want to like revisit our master plan or create a whole new master plan? Because creating a new master plan, I think is a wonderful idea, because if we build, we should know where we're building and why and have a plan for building it. But that will be certainly something that will cost money to have somebody design a new master plan to determine where this new building should be. Where's the logical place for the building? We'll have to do geotechnical studies of the ground to make sure it's not shifting ground. The other thing is, can't we ask for funding for the state for these buildings? The CTE is a big, important mission of the state for us to offer these programs and if we need it? And the other thing is, what is the cost per square foot of the buildings, of building these buildings? Could we put that in maybe one of the columns, okay? Thank you.
I think you have multiple questions.
Yeah, I've got four questions. You want me to go over them one by one?
I can give the answer.
Okay.
What we are facing the challenge is, is only right now for the ATAS buildings, we have promised something to the faculty and the students, that we will have either remodel building or something better for them. I cannot, in my mind, can make them stay at the portable until we do something educational master. No, absolutely not. So what we are recommending is we really need to find a spot now, we did the geotechnical study, and we will make sure that that is moved a lot faster. We will not wait.
No, no, but what I'm saying is we have to do the master plan now, so we know where we're going to put the building. I mean, that's number one, I think, if we're going to put the building someplace.
And we know where to put the building as well, we just want.
So we don't have to do another master plan?
You still have to do the educational master.
Okay.
That's why we budgeted that word in the budget that we went over earlier.
That educational master plan is driven by district.
Important, it's important, you're right. It's important.
For both the colleges, and that has something to do with this particular program, not everything. I just wanted to know that. That educational master plan will serve you for next 15, 20 years.
Right, right.
What your building program will be. But you need this building now because you already embarked upon this building almost four years ago, maybe longer. So I just wanted to make sure the urgency of this building is more than anything else for Saddleback College.
But can't we request funding for the state, from the state? No?
You will not require the funding from the state for three reasons. Number one, we already have the gateway building in the pipeline. They only fund one building every two-year cycle. The first cycle for us to get the gateway building in line is 2021. By the 2122 rollout, all the funds will be extended for the bound program. They will be out of luck. If they did for the sciences building for a long time, they end up spending their own money and build the sciences building. We don't want to go to the same route for this particular program.
Okay.
We just wanted to make sure if something needs to be done, let's get it done, because it is impossible for us to gauge how the state is going to be. Now, if somebody says, oh, we're going to have another two billion dollar program, no, I don't think I can convince this faculty to stay in portable for next year.
No, no, I'm not saying that, but I'm saying that then if we, if there's urgency in building a new building for our CTE programs that are so important for our students and our staff, mainly our students, we need to move forward pretty quickly in doing the master plan then.
I think I will let Deborah answer that part of the question.
So that's not what we're going to do.
No.
There's an urgency to this. We're not going to wait for the master plan to take, which takes a couple of years, to make this decision. We have to act now. So what we're asking as the recommendation at the bottom is that we want you to approve us to further explore option three for a new Saddleback College ATAS building, including added square footage to growth and to support action associated with adjustments to the environmental impact report for our existing educational facilities master plan. And so the next steps would be to do adjustments to our EIR, which is a sequoia analysis. So we'll be doing that immediately to get this taken care of, so then it just, so that's a change to our master plan, but then we'll be able to move forward, which is better than just doing a whole new master plan. That's a couple of years' worth of activity, because we want to do it quite, quite a different process than last time to include a lot of steps in really doing our educational planning side of it.
Do you have other questions?
No.
Okay. Trustee Witt.
Quickly, Brandy, question for you. Is it possible to pull your magic and make it more than 8,000 square feet? I mean, is it possible? $22 million. Can you make it more than 8,000 square feet? If, if what CM says for, you know, we're looking at another 10 to, what, 10 to 15 years, 8,000 square feet isn't enough.
If we put more square foot in this building, we have a thing called a capacity load ratio.
Oh, Jesus.
And if we put it in this building, we have to take it out of another building in the future. So we constantly have to plan for, based on what is allowable by what the programs that are in that building, what we know they're currently growing at a certain rate, like CM mentioned, half a percent. And so we're projecting positively to 1% over that next 10 years, so we maximize in every way we can the growth on this building using the programs that are in there. So we couldn't make it bigger without taking from someone else.
Look, that's a really different, and again, she is absolutely right. College is a lot of jigs up our head. Move one thing and it affects others. So we wanted to make sure that there's no negative impact of any new building or any renovation of the building, and we have to be mindful about it all the time. What Deborah is saying, that it will take a long time for the district to develop the educational and facility master plan. You will have plenty of opportunity at that time to look at the large picture and see how do you manage the future. At that point, you can say, how do we want to bring the new building, more efficient building, larger, smaller, which building you will be moving it, not moving it. You will be able to get good answers during that time, when you're developing that EIR.
So, Trustee Witt, did you have another question? So if we vote to move this forward, is this irreversible? Meaning that we're going in this direction? Or might something change? Programmatically, architecturally? If we vote to approve staff to further explore, that's the language being used?
And move forward with the environmental impact report.
Yeah, I mean.
So in doing so.
We locked into this option? I mean, that's, I mean, I'm just, I'm just asking.
They're entered into, they're locked into anything.
Okay.
They're not obligated to do anything. However, if there were to be changes, it will impact the occupancy date, not just by the time of perhaps a month, if you wanted to explore options, but would impact the occupancy date by a semester.
So one of the, one of the problems I have with this, and Trustee Lang touched on it a little bit, is you're doing so well, CM, and then I think you veered a little. It's hard to go three for three, but. Sorry. But I, I don't think you can consider ATEP as in a box somewhere else, and that's kind of how you responded.
Oh, my.
Well, hold on a second. You can respond, but I mean, the purpose of ATEP, which we've been, you know, clogging away at for 20 years, is to build a workforce development campus to develop in-demand jobs and mainly through CTE programs. So I understand that Saddleback College wants students on this campus, we do too. But at the same time, we want to develop a workforce development campus at, in Tustin, on 70 acres. So it has to be considered together. You cannot consider sort of ATEP separate from Saddleback or IVC separate from ATEP. I mean, when you come back to us, it has to be considered together. How does the on-campus CTE programs fit into what we're going to do at ATEP? I mean, it can't be, ATEP's there, we'll figure it out later. No, we're done with that. We're not going to do that anymore. So I think when you, when you come back with some more research, as Trustee Prendergast mentioned, and more detailed explanations on the programming, then I think those questions need to be addressed. Go ahead, Kathy.
Could I, I would, I would like to say one thing. So the board may recall that we have already previously approved what would be in the first buildings for each of the colleges. And so IVC already, obviously has program already identified and they have their first building underway. The first building for Saddleback College, and I'm sure you remember, is going to be the Center for Innovation in Healthcare Education. And that is the priority. That's something that currently Saddleback College does not have, and they are going to do there, and it's a new concept and a new, new thing with new, obviously, ability to attract students there, our current students in training and a variety of things. We already have a plan for either an immediate, we are, we're currently under an educational facilities master plan process that we're currently under, a plan that we're already following through. And we promised our faculty that we would have a, have this program here at this college campus. Now, as we go through our educational and facilities master planning process for our new plan, all those things are going to be comprehensively looked at. So what you're saying, Trustee Jamal, is right on target. We're going to be looking at how ATEP fits in into our educational plan, and that's something that's really important, because the educational plan has to be done properly and holistically, so then our facilities can be planned accordingly. So that's all part of what we're going to be doing under that two-year initiative. We obviously would love to have board input to that, but that's part of that planning. So I hope that answers your question.
I mean, well, it's 9:46. I think the Saddleback College building has not been built. The Center for Healthcare Innovation still is more of a concept than a program, and so, I mean, I think that's true. And I think if Todd were here, he would probably grudgingly acknowledge that, that is true. And so it's just, I don't, I'm not disagreeing with what you're saying, I just think you have to, this has to be considered holistically, and you cannot consider three separate buckets, buckets of IVC, ATEP, Saddleback. It has to be all, it has to be interconnected when you consider CTE programs. But anyway, so let's, I think, seeing no further questions, I think it's time to have a motion to approve the item. We have a motion from Trustee Jay and a second from Trustee Milchekr. Any further discussions? Probably not. Let's go ahead and vote. All right, we have a six to zero trustee vote and a student advisory yes vote. Thank you all for that presentation.
If I can make a 30-second comment, I did want you to know, I sincerely appreciate the opportunity to work with you all. I'm sure Deborah, Deborah in the past, she said, oh, get it this one, this one, this one, so I have no choice.
And I hope you know I was mainly joking with you.
[laughing].
All right?
So thank you for that.
Sure. But not entirely joking. All right. Moving on to 6.12, board policy. Sure. But not entirely joking. All right. Moving on to 6.12, board policy revisions. Is there a motion to approve? Motion from Trustee Lang, a second from Trustee Jay. Any questions? Let's go ahead and vote. A unanimous trustee approval and student trustee yes vote. All right. 6.13, academic personnel actions, regular items. We have a motion to approve the item.
I have, I have something I'd...
Well, do you want to move the motion?
On the floor.
Move the item? But do we have a motion in a second?
Are there any changes? Oh, okay.
Well, are there any changes to the item? No changes to the item? Okay, we have a motion from trustee that you know of. Still on even at 10 o'clock at night. Motion from Trustee Jay, and a second from Trustee Prendergast, and a question from Trustee Milchikir.
I want to request separating these items, to separate the academic personnel. And I'll give you the ones I want to separate. Number 1C, E, 1, 1C and E, and 2A, B, C, D, E, G, H, and I. Okay. 1C and E, and 2A, B, C, D, E, G, H, and I.
Okay.
I'll support the motion to separate if that's a separate motion.
So do we have a motion to separate? Pardon me?
If she accepts that.
Do you accept this motion?
Yes.
Okay. Well, you don't have to do that, if you accept it. Yeah, let's, trustee Jay, trustee Prendergast, we have a motion, friendly amendment.
So yes, we're, we're voting for the balance of the academic personnel item?
We're voting for the motion or for the balance of the item?
The balance of the items with your polls.
Because you polled those items, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So we're promoting, we're, we're voting on the balance that have not been polled. Okay.
Okay.
Right.
Okay. Let's go ahead and vote. Unanimous trustee yes vote, and student advisory yes vote. Trustee Milchikir.
Before we get to the balance of the, I'd like to extend the meeting to 10:30.
Okay.
All right. We have a motion to extend the meeting until 10:30 PM from trustee Prendergast.
Then we're out of here.
Okay. Well...
And is there a second to that? There's a second from trustee Lang. We need to go ahead and vote. There, the motion carries unanimously with student advisory yes vote. Trustee Milchikir.
Yeah, I have a problem. I don't, can't vote for these unless I hear a good enough argument why I should. This is the first time I've ever seen that, that I could recall, that none of the academic administrators or the faculty members, can you hear me? That none of the academic administrators or the faculty members has a resume. And I, I don't see how I could vote for them if none of them has a resume in, in the agenda item. From my understanding, in my 30 years of being a trustee, there's always been a resume in these, in these items. And there isn't one. Also, two, two of the items, there's one, an assistant dean of career and technical education, that's a new position, and another one is dean of career pathways and dual enrollment, and that's a new position. I've understand that there've been, like, double the number of administrators at Saddleback College. So I'm very concerned that we're creating way too many administrators, and I don't, haven't really seen the, the need for all these administrators. We were just talking about how we have too many hires in this district, and how, how are these administrators going to help our students? So, so that's the problem I have with these particular agenda items. And I kind of hate to vote against the new faculty members, but I feel like none of them has a resume, and I just have to do that, because I've always seen that.
I think the chancellor has a response.
Okay.
So, yes. So, yes, we did on new positions such as some of these positions that you indicated. I'm not sure if all of them, but we did have a resume behind each one of these as exhibits. And...
You did? No, it wasn't, it wasn't on my agenda.
Well, I, I said previous, can I, can I finish?
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Sorry.
In previous board, board items in the past. However, there, by putting somebody's resume out there like that in a public forum, there's a potential for identity theft by having all that detailed information in a resume-type format. What we could do in the future is a, sort of like a compromise, sort of like we did in the section under the equivalencies, where we sort of have a little paragraph. It's not as much information and details, so people can't sort of take that and sort of copy that and, and do that. And we can eliminate the concerns of individuals having all that information out there in a public setting, but more of a summary paragraph, where we can give you the confidence that there's qualified faculty that we are hiring and...
But how could, I mean, I know people are worried about, I mean, I discussed with you last night. I talked about it with you last night, as, as you know.
Yes.
And I expressed my concerns then.
Yes.
But, but how can we make a decision if we don't see their resume? We don't see what their qualifications are?
Right. The people who have obviously been tasked on the search committees, as well as the appropriate ministers and managers that are recommended to, including the college presidents, obviously are tasked with that. And obviously, look and hire the best qualified people before we bring this for you for recommendations. So they have obviously looked at the resumes. But what we can do is just recap that in a summary paragraph, so you can see a little bit about their information. But it's not all out there in the public with all the details and things.
Well, maybe there's some way you can get it to the board without, you know, getting it out there to everyone.
So, just so you know, we did look and see what other college districts are doing, and nobody else was sharing that kind of detailed information like we were doing that, and sort of exposing these vocals, those, those people to that kind of situation.
Really?
Can I ask, Marsha, can I ask you a question?
I'd kind of like to learn more about that, to see if that's accurate or not.
Is your concern that they may have been hired without, they're having their resumes reviewed, or is your concern more that we don't have a chance to receive their resumes before they're hired?
No, my concern is that we don't have a chance to review the resume.
So you, you're acknowledging they have probably reviewed the resumes?
Yeah, yeah, I'm acknowledging that.
Okay. All right. Just raise your hand. Who's requested to speak? Trustee Prendergast and trustee Lang.
I just, I mean, I get, you know, Kathy's not here, but trust the process is what, while I was here, is we've got to trust that HR has screened these people, and they're qualified. Yes, we've had some problems in the past where not the best screening was done for all intents and purposes, but those things we hope have been cleaned up. But I do, I do acknowledge one of your concerns of, you know, you know, I'll just take one, for example, the first one, 1C, new position approved by the board in December. But since December, we've gotten new information about kind of the excess potential, or potential excess of deans, potential excess of, of salary placements of deans and things of that nature, other administrative positions, and kind of the top-heavy perception. So, is there a way to, I guess, assure us that, that this has been looked at? And yes, we may have approved it in December, but maybe if we had new information, we may not have approved it, and you're taking that into account. I guess that might alleviate some of the concern that you may be having, if I'm, if I'm reading it correctly. But as far as the resumes, I don't want to read all these resumes. And I'm going to assume that, I'm going to assume that somebody else has, and that, that they were good. And, I mean, I mean, we don't have the resumes on, on 1A, but we heard earlier, all their qualifications, and I'm okay with that. But, so I, I, I think, we don't want to get too far into the weeds of every single person we hire in the district without trusting the people that we've hired, or that the chancellor is overseeing, or that the vice chancellor is overseeing, and all of that. Because then, yeah, I think we're, we're just going to get buried.
I can say that I have reviewed the resumes, and we do have the resumes. So if you would like to look at those resumes, I have them available.
Yeah, I'd like to look at them, yeah.
Okay. Trustee Lang.
Yes, I'm more along the lines of what trustee Prendergast was speaking to, and that is that... Don't know if I speak right. And that, and that is that we did approve these positions. I also would further presume that the reason that they're on tonight's agenda is that we further looked to see whether these positions are actually necessary and should be filled, and am willing to basically accept that. I think the only one that I don't see that wasn't previously approved was one that's mostly categorically funded, and, you know, a small amount out of the general fund. That one doesn't bother me so much. So I, I make a motion that we approve all of these items, A1, C, and E, 2A, B, C, D, E, G, H, and I.
Right? Yeah, we, you need to reset the screen here. No. Well, I don't know about that, but you can just, yeah, go ahead.
I did want to speak to the question raised about whether we still needed these positions and whether discussions did ensue since December. We did actively have those discussions. We talked about that at the president's meetings, the chancellor's executive council, and they also discussed these internally at the college level. So those were, those kind of discussions were, had, and they did felt that these still were very important priorities for the colleges to fill these positions.
Oh, there we go. Okay.
Here we go. Very good. Okay, we have, thank you. We have a motion from trustee Lang and a second from trustee Jay to approve the balance of these items, 6.13. Let's go ahead and vote. Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry, I couldn't, it wouldn't let me.
Okay. We have a request to speak.
Just, just a question. Some of these have already started, and I have a question. Some of these already started is...
She's right. The dean of career and technical education started June the 6th, and the dean of career pathways and dual enrollment started May the 1st. And we're just approving it today. That was my other question, but I didn't want to overwhelm you.
So, this is a ratification item. So what that means is, it's approved, it goes through the, you know, the college process, the college approves it, then it comes to the chancellor who approves it, then the board just ratifies the, it's a vote of ratification.
All right. Let's go ahead and vote. Someone hasn't voted. We have, the motion carries by a five to one vote, and a student trustee yes vote. All right.
Point of order, real quick.
Yes, sir.
Just procedurally. What if we had said no? If they've already started and we're just ratifying?
I don't know. It's a good question.
I mean, what, what does that mean? The board just ratifies?
I mean, I'm not saying that we should. I just, that just, I mean, I don't know.
This issue has come up in the past, maybe three years ago, we had a situation like this, where it was a rat...
So actually, you did have this happen on something where I didn't, it was a position and not a person, and we, we took it off, and she corrected the item, and I didn't put it back on yet till we worked it out. So that did happen a couple of months ago. Remember? Yeah.
All right. We're on to 6.14, classified personnel actions. We have a motion to approve from trustee Prendergast and a second from trustee Jay. Any questions?
Any changes?
Are there any changes to the item?
No.
Okay. Any questions on the item?
Thank you for asking.
All right. Let's go ahead and vote. Motion carries six to zero with a student trustee yes vote. Very good. Okay. 6.15, rescind, rescindment of a sabbatical leave. Okay. Motion from trustee Lang, second from trustee Prendergast. Any discussion? Nope. Let's go ahead and vote. Motion carries six to zero with student advisory yes vote. 6.16, which is the employment agreement for our interim chancellor, Deborah Finn Simmons. And we have a motion from trustee Witt, and a second from trustee Lang. Any discussion on the item? Okay. Seeing none. Let's go ahead and vote. Motion carries six to zero with student advisory, student trustee yes vote. I think we, I think we're just trying to get through. Congratulations. And we, we look forward to working with you up to another year. And we had a great session on Saturday, and we talked about the goals of the board and, and the interim chancellor. Clearly, one of our priorities is going to be to help us move through this, a selection of a permanent chancellor. We're going to do a few things differently, and, and we hope to, we hope to get someone in, in place that, that meets our standards and objectives. All right. But that doesn't mean we're not going to move forward with other changes. And I think you all know we're, we're supporting her in those efforts. Okay. 7.0 reports, Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College annual accreditation reports. Anything I want to say? Are we supposed to get a presentation? Okay. All right. All right. I don't think, why do we have a motion of...
No.
Okay. 7.2, Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College speakers, list of speakers for upcoming events. Trustee Witt.
Yes. In the past, I believe we always put the amount. I'm just asking why we didn't do that this time, or is it too soon, too far in advance?
It was in the ratification, it was in the prinzip calendar?
Oh, before? Okay, sorry. This is ratification again. Here I go. Thank you.
Okay. 7.3, staff response to public comments from a previous board meeting. Trustee Witt, are you asking to speak?
No.
Okay. 7.4, list of board requested reports. 7.5, CCCT student trustee member election. Trustee Prendergast.
I am going to nominate our new trustee, student trustee, Jordan Larson, for this position. He ran for it once before, and, and close but no cigar, but he wants to try again, so.
I second that. This time, maybe we could help you more than we helped you last time.
You're going to have to second it, TJ, but I, I, because I think there's a motion on the table from trustee Milchikir.
Snuck in on there.
Second from trustee Prendergast. Student trustee Larson.
I believe with my gained knowledge and experience from six years ago, that I will bring the trophy to our district.
Well, we'll do what we can to support you, and I think this is a start. All right. Let's go ahead and vote. Oh. Oh, well, there's a motion in a second. Okay. All right. Move on. Okay, we're now on to, well, we would have voted for you. All right. 7.6, basic aid report. Nope. No changes. Okay. 7.7, facilities plan status report. 7.8, monthly financial status report. Trustee Witt.
Yes.
Has it been brought to us before? The, where is it? We just did the technology building, but the health center? Are we on 7.7?
7.8.
No, we moved back.
We passed 7.7.
Okay.
But we can revisit.
Can we?
Yeah.
When was that brought up? Where was I? The health center and the concession project? Was that brought up to us before? I mean, when we say concession project...
Which campus?
I would surmise that it's at Saddleback.
So the IVC...
Or if it's IVC, then I don't have a problem. I know that we brought that. But when I, okay.
The IVC Health Center and Concession Project is a project that was approved a couple years ago and funded through Basic Aid.
Okay.
The Basic Aid presentation that you heard earlier this evening allowed for augmentation to that project for their furniture fixtures and equipment dollars. And so that project has already been in design phase, and I'm not sure when the construction will be, but it's already underway.
Well, that's great. But, you know, if you read that, I saw sports medicine, and I'm thinking it's going to be close to the, and then it said, it's moving from the Health, from the Student Service Center, and that's, yeah. All right, okay, no problem.
Okay, thank you. I think we're on to 7.8, and now 7.9, OPEB Trust, and 7.10, Purchasing and Contracts Department Update.
I did want to point out that we've been trying to focus on more streamlining of processes and promoting cost savings across the district. A lot of activity has been happening. So this is just a one-page, maybe it's a two-page summary of some of the activities that they've been doing. And as you can notice, even under the piggyback agreements, for instance, that's going to save on an annual basis $500,000 to $750,000 a year. Some of these other programs that are underway, for instance, the Amazon Punch-Out, it'll save between $15,000 to $25,000 per month. Also, there's a lot of changes to contract templates and things that'll be better serve our district. And the recent negotiations that you approved tonight in the bookstore operations services provider will save the district over $300,000 in the five-year, five years versus the current agreement that we have. So I just want to commend the efforts that are being made across the district on these kind of things. These are like no brainers, because what this means is we don't have to do other things. These are, these are saving our money, money that could be used for instruction for student services and other important areas of priority at the colleges, so...
All right, thank you. We're now on to Governance Groups Reports. I see we don't have, it's not going to be much of a report tonight because no one's here. So the academic senate is not here, the unions are not here. And so, let's move on to Vice Chancellor of Technology and, what is it, Educational Services and Technology, right?
Services. The hour's late, but we have, we've had one of our student success projects go live. I wanted to take a minute and describe it to you. It's sobering to think that colleges and universities have had paper-based course schedules for over 500 years. Approximately about 20 years ago, they started to put those online. And the average one is now digital, but it is probably a PDF, and it's searchable. So it's better, it saves trees. But we believe that we're leaving a lot of student success on the table with that. So working between our developers and our student design team, we actually interview and hire students to work on our student design teams, and we give them major responsibilities for these projects. So one of the first things we did was to assign them to review the online course schedules of all 113 California community colleges. It confirmed our suspicions that while certain of them had some nice features, nobody was really doing a great job with it. So then we went out and assigned them, well, who is doing a great job? Freed them out to look at land-grant universities, Ivy League schools. We were able to come together with a feature list, create a best-of-breed product. I'm happy to tell you that we have the first iteration of that out now. Smart Schedule is live. We're already starting to work on Phase Two, where we're going to add predictive search and faceted search. We're also in discussions with the state high-tech unit, because we believe that all 2.1 million California community college students can benefit from this. So those will be ongoing. And one last thing, this has been a very collaborative project. We have faculty, staff, students, and administrators from both college. A lot of people worked on this, and I want to thank them.
Thank you for that report. We have now the Executive Director of Human Resources.
Oh, thank you very much. There were 21 full-time faculty recruited for and 17 have been hired so far. HR is in the process of doing new hire orientations, and we have completed 10 so far. On another note, I'd like to say on the personnel agendas, this evening, there were approximately 62 employees, both academic and classified, that are taking the supplemental retirement program for June 30th, 2017. And if you noted, there was one person who actually started in 1974. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Vice Chancellor, or Acting Vice Chancellor of Business Services.
I'll report.
Thank you. Now we're on to the IVC Classified Senate. You're good, you're on.
Oh, thank you. Maria Nunez for Karen Martin, couldn't make it. June, we actually were quite busy. We had an end-year celebration where we honored all the retirees for June. The next week, we had our Professional Development Summit, which was quite successful. We had around 50 people come and attend. We had a FERPA presentation in the morning, and then Dr. Rockmore had a geological presentation in the afternoon and took a tour over in Dana Point, so that was quite fun. And last week, we had four attendees to the 2017 Classified Leadership Institute. And at the end of that, Karen Martin was actually, she was sworn in as the South VP for the statewide organization, which was...
That's great.
That's all we have.
Thank you. And last but not least, Scott Green.
Due to the lateness of the hour, I don't have a report. I will have a report in three weeks with our next meeting.
Thank you, Scott. Anyone else? Okay, so, "We are sad to adjourn our meeting tonight in memory of Nicole J. Ladina, a student at Irvine Valley College who passed away last weekend after a long illness. Nicole was a music and psychology double major, a psi-beta student, and a music therapist who dedicated her time to bring comfort, hope, and healing to people and their families through music. She recently interned at UCSD at the Music and Brain Research Lab. She was scheduled to attend Berkeley College of Music in Boston this fall and had planned to study abroad her first year in Spain. It is disheartening to share the passing of a promising young person who had so much to give others. Our sympathy, thoughts, and prayers go out to her family, friends, and colleagues."